James Nacita, Commissioner.
Doug Neely, Commissioner. I'm not used to having my own mic.
Rocky Smith, Commissioner.
Would you please stand and join me in the flag salute?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. This is the last meeting of 2009, which means that this is your last sesquicentennial moment. I know that you'll really be sad about that, but as Oregon City has celebrated the sesquicentennial, we have brought you rare and interesting moments from the history of the city. Because it's December, I thought it would be good to kind of revisit the incorporation of Oregon's first city, Oregon City. Because there's a little controversy about whether we incorporated in 1844 or 1845, and here's the deal. Oregon City was first incorporated on Christmas Eve, and don't you get any ideas about holding a council meeting on Christmas Eve, but the provisional government met on Christmas Eve. And they had a petition there to incorporate Oregon City, which was read three times as was required. It was read December 19th, December 20th, and passed on December 24th. This meeting was held at the home of Felix Hathaway. I don't know where that is in the community, so somebody should tell me. Anyway, and then in June of 1845, at the home of Theophilus McGruder, there was a petition read from the city of Oregon City to amend the incorporation, and it was read on June 25th. No one is quite certain why. There are those that think that something was a sort of a miss in the provisional regulations, but Oregon City asked to be reincorporated. The same time that the Multnomah Circulating Library, and that's the one in Oregon City, not the one in Multnomah County, was also voted to be incorporated. So that was passed actually in June 1845. Now, the mystery is, for whatever reason, the reincorporation date, 1845, was celebrated in 1895, would that be 50 years, and 1945, which would be 100 years. It celebrates Jubilee and its centennial as the first city. And somehow in there, though, we went back to the 1844 date. So, there's the mystery. You historians may continue to debate that. And the other interesting thing, and this information comes from Jim Tonkins, who is personal historian to the mayor of Oregon City. Of the first four incorporations passed by the provisional government, Oregon City is the only survivor. So, first and only, and that is your final sesquicentennial moment that lets you know the scoop on the incorporation of the city of Oregon City. So let's move along. The next item on the agenda, ooh, just has arrived. We are very excited tonight because our police department, on behalf of the city, gets to present a special award to a very special young woman. Chief Conrad.
We're very pleased tonight to be presenting an award for distinguished bravery to Destiny Rowe-Capell. And she's a very impressive young lady, and I'm going to let Lieutenant Jim Van kind of explain the reasons why she's receiving the award.
All right, good evening. Destiny, you want to come up?
How are you, Destiny? Kind of weird standing in front of a bunch of people.
Well, and she'll even feel weirder when she realizes that that camera up there is photographing you for thousands of people to watch this moment.
Oh yeah, that helps.
Okay, so I'm going to read something, just to kind of explain a little bit why we're here and what happened that brought us to this award, which I think is, I don't know if we've ever done, if the department has ever done a bravery award before. We have? It's been a while, I think. So anyways, okay, on the morning of October 28th, 2009, Destiny was in the family residence bathroom, straightening her hair in preparation for day at school, normal day. Destiny heard loud knocking coming from the residence's front door. Her stepfather was in the family living room with their two younger twin boys who were here in orange jackets. Destiny saw her stepfather answer the door when three adult male subjects, who she didn't know, entered the residence without permission. One of them had a handgun, which he pointed at Destiny's stepfather. Destiny grabbed the hand of one of her brothers, who'd gotten out of bed, and took the brother to her room where she hid with him. Eventually, one of the suspects came to Destiny's room and discovered that she was there and saw that she had one of her brothers with her. That man ordered her to take her brother into the master bedroom, where the guy with the handgun had her stepfather. Destiny tells the suspect that she doesn't know, that she needed to get her other brother, who was still in the living room of the residence. Against the orders of this guy, the suspect who was with the guy with the gun, she went to the living room with her brother, grabbed the hand of her other brother, took the boys to the master bedroom, where the suspect ordered them to get into the bedroom closet. As she entered the bedroom, she saw the suspect, who was armed with a handgun, holding the handgun to her stepfather's head, as he was kneeling in the bathroom. Once in the closet, Destiny told her brothers that they were playing hide-and-go-seek and asked her brothers to keep very quiet. She gave her brothers her guitar, which was in the closet, to play with in order to keep them quiet. Her actions ensure the safety of her two-year-old brothers, her ability to stay calm during this terrifying situation, and selfless devotion to her brothers exemplify her courage. Something to add, too, that is not written down in here, that Cynthia Gates, who is the detective, told me that an additional detail was that, as, one of these guys had put on a mask, and we ended up seizing the masks, and they were very kind of scary-looking, very different. And she told her brothers to look at the floor as she was walking by, because she didn't want them to look and see, to see this mask and get freaked out. So, I think in our job, a lot of times, we see people at their worst, and how people respond when some of these extreme circumstances happen, sometimes we get to see people at their best. And I think that's what we saw. I think you have tremendous courage, tremendous character, and not everybody thinks of other people when they're very scared. And you clearly do, and I think you could, as you move forward, probably do just about anything. So, congratulations, and here's your award.
Destiny, on behalf of the city council and the citizens of Oregon City, it's extraordinary that, to have you here with us, and we are, we just admire your courage and your bravery and your ability to think on your feet. So, we're delighted that you can be here today because of what you did. So, thank you all for coming, and thank you to the police department for recognizing this. It's wonderful to recognize positive things that happen in our community. Thank you very much. We have another very exciting thing to occur next, and I would like to invite Tracy Fortman, who is here as our guest this evening, from the, she's the superintendent of Fort Vancouver National Historic Site. We have both of those work, just pull them toward you. I got a phone call from Tracy not too long ago, and Tracy suggested that the National Parks Service might not look unfavorably upon a request by the city of Oregon City to consider beginning a process to donate Ermitinga House to the National Parks Service. And that's one of the most exciting phone calls I've had all year long, because I remember going through the process with John Salisbury, who's also back there in the back, works at McLaughlin National Heritage Site, as we transferred McLaughlin House for, in perpetuity, to the safekeeping of the National Parks Service. So, we also want to hear from you, Tracy, but I wonder if I might read you a letter first, that the city of Oregon City would like to deliver to you this evening. And the letter goes into a lot of the history of this very special house. It's addressed to Mr. Roy Westberg, who is the acting director, regional director of the National Parks Service, located in Oakland, California. Dear Mr. Westberg, the purpose of this letter is to clarify the position of the city of Oregon City on Ermitinga House, and to make a proposal to the National Parks Service regarding the long-term preservation and public use of this historic property. Several years ago, when the National Parks Service was engaged in the general management planning process for Fort Vancouver National Historic Site, the MPS was considering the possibility of adding historical properties in Oregon City, Oregon, which have a direct connection with Dr. John McLaughlin, chief factor of the Hudson Bay Company, HBC, and the HBC operations in their Columbia Department as part of the park. It was discussed at that time that three Oregon City properties were important historic properties worthy of consideration for addition to Fort Vancouver National Historic Site and direct management by the National Parks Service, due to their direct relationship with the Hudson Bay Company and the early settlement of the history of the Oregon Territory, the McLaughlin House, the Barclay House, and the Francis Ermitinga House. At that time, city of Oregon City endorsed legislation that would add the McLaughlin House National Historic Site, which was then an affiliated area of the National Park System, as a unit of Fort Vancouver National Historic Site. On July 29th, 2003, Congress passed Public Law 108-63, which authorizes these two properties to be added as the McLaughlin House unit of Fort Vancouver National Historic Site. The MPS proceeded to purchase the McLaughlin and Barclay Houses from the McLaughlin Memorial Association in March 2004. Concurrently, the city of Oregon City donated a scenic easement from its Charter Park land at the McLaughlin Site to the MPS that provides for full MPS management and access to the site for public use and MPS operations and site preservation. In 2007, a plan for the McLaughlin House unit, which also included the Barclay House, was subsequently approved by the MPS. The MPS now manages these two historic properties in cooperation with McLaughlin Memorial Association and the city of Oregon City. We are very pleased with the positive relationship between the city and the National Parks Service that has been sustained since the property was incorporated as a unit of Fort Vancouver National Historic Site. Unfortunately, at the time of the public discussions about the future of the McLaughlin and Barclay Houses, the position of the city of Oregon City regarding the Francis Ermitinga House was less clear. Initially, the MPS and the city both supported the inclusion of the Ermitinga House into the legislation. However, at a later date, the city of Oregon City requested that Ermitinga House be removed from consideration. We now believe that this latter position by the city was in error. The Francis Ermitinga House is listed on the National Register of Historic Places and is located within the McLaughlin Conservation District established by the city in 1982. The Ermitinga House was built in 1945 by Dr. John McLaughlin for Francis Ermitinga, who was the chief trader for the Hudson Bay Company and charge of the Hudson Bay Company store in Oregon City until 1846. Mr. Ermitinga reported directly to Dr. McLaughlin. The Ermitinga House is the oldest house in Clackamas County, Oregon, and was the site of the historic coin toss that named the city of Portland. In order to provide for the long-term protection of this historic property, the city of Oregon City, which maintains title to both the land and the historic Ermitinga House itself, proposes to donate the land and improvements of this site to the National Parks Service in perpetuity to preserve, maintain, and occupy Ermitinga House as a public structure. We make this proposal with the full confidence that, if accepted by the MPS, this historic property will be preserved and made available for public use and education about the history of the structure and its relationship to the larger context of the history of Dr. McLaughlin, the Hudson Bay Company, and the settlement of the Oregon Territory. It is our understanding that prior to National Parks Service consideration of a donation request of this type, that a condition assessment and other procedural steps must be followed by MPS. The city of Oregon City will make our departmental staff, resources, fully available to the MPS during this period of consideration. We look forward to working with you on this proposal as we move toward the long-term preservation and public use of this historic property. We appreciate your full consideration of this donation proposal, and our CCs to our congressional delegation as well. So we welcome you, we would like to hand you this historic letter and hear from you what this first step means to the city and to the National Parks Service.
Well, thank you, Mayor Norris, and to the city commissioners for allowing me to be here tonight, and I will immediately see that this gets into the hands of Roy Westberg, our regional director, and this is the first step. Now, I've got to be upfront here, Mayor, you and I believe city commissioner Neely, on a number of occasions, has suggested, as well as members of the community, that we consider this kind of request, and Ermitinga has been on everyone's mind for a number of years. And I think this is the time to carefully consider, and I appreciate the city making that first step to put a formal request together. We will most likely get back to you after the first of the year and begin to work hand and glove with the city. We've worked really well with Scott Archer, as well as your city manager, over the years with the McLaughlin Site, and I believe we will work just as well with them with regard to this proposal. The first step will be for us to have a better understanding of the condition of the facility. And we will be seeking from you all information about the structure as we move forward. We also will need to determine issues associated with the property, any conveyance issues, restrictions. Much of this is really, in a way, a dance, that we will have to work together so that we fully understand and do the due diligence to consider what is a very thoughtful proposal to us. Ultimately, we will need to also evaluate the appropriateness of this house becoming part of Fort Vancouver National Historic Site, as well as the National Park System. So, we'll work through that every step of the way with you, and I certainly will be available, as you wish, to come forward and keep you up to date as we move through the process. So, that sort of gives you a sense of where we are, and hopefully you'll hear the beginning as we move forward after the first of the year.
In the best-case scenario and the worst-case scenario, what might be the timeline for the process? If all went well, and if we had glitches along the way?
Um, you know, I-
It's been running us so many years, if you would like it.
Well, I believe it took two congressional sessions to create McLaughlin House.
Yes, and I, you know, I'm, it's difficult for me, because I don't have the experts with me here. And we have just begun considering how this may happen. Would it require legislation, or could it be a minor boundary adjustment? And those decisions, which will have to be made, would be key on the timeliness, but I certainly would hope, we were, the stars aligned with regard to the McLaughlin House site, I believe all of you would agree, that happened very quickly. And so it would be my hope that we would be very fortunate in this case, too. But I don't really want to put a timeline out there until we have the chance to work it through, the channels that I'll have to work it through. This community is blessed. I'm sure you are all aware how wonderful this place is. You can rarely turn a corner and not touch historical significance in structures. You have the most wonderful pioneer cemetery. Historic homes abound. So, the notion of you're stepping forward, because I also believe you represent your community and the love of your history here, certainly that this was no simple process to work through to approach us on this issue. And so we will, we will give you every consideration, and certainly, I would be the first to say that I believe the site is significant, nationally significant, makes a wonderful connection with the McLaughlin House National Site that's associated with Fort Vancouver. And so I believe that you have a good hand, let's say that. And so as we move forward, we'll just have to see.
I'm sure commissioners may have questions, and we, of course, want to hear about your contributions at McLaughlin Site.
Right.
Commissioners, do you have questions?
I think your agenda-
Commissioner Smith? It's actually Commissioner Neely, who's, Tracy, just for the audience, we are paperless here, and so we have a monitor, and we now have to punch a button to do the speaking order, so we're all getting used to that. So Commissioner Neely.
Well, first of all, I appreciate your being here, and I appreciate also the budgetary constraints that the National Park Service is under, and at the same time, the tremendous support that you've been able to give to the McLaughlin House people. They may have been walking around the house when it was laboriously scraped, painted, in a fashion that was consistent with the historic nature of the house, and what a detail ever that the National Park Service went through to do that, to do that work was, it was impressive to both of us, at least, who knew what was going on. And as I say, the constraints you're under budgetarily and the commitment that you've made, I also wanted to just make an acknowledgement to the McLaughlin Memorial Association, who does also make contributions to having a ranger at that particular site, as well as the National Park Service. There's, I think, a, and I'm going to look, I want to also extend my appreciation to Margen Raula Harding to be the volunteer managers of the Ermitinga House in this period of time that the city has ownership of it. And I'm going to kind of glance to them, if they shake their head no, or nod their head yes, because I was going to add another component to the letter, if I'm correct in my understanding. My understanding is the McLaughlin House and the Barclay House were actually built by the residents that were there. They were not actually built by the Hudson's Bay Company. The Ermitinga House, I believe, is unique, in that it was actually built by the Hudson's Bay Company for a staff person. And it may be the only existing, I'm getting nods from behind there, the only existing Hudson's Bay constructed property of that era that was, at its extent, that exists.
Anywhere.
Anywhere. I couldn't see if that was a no, or you were trying, so it is extremely unique in that sense. All the other Hudson's Bay structures that might exist were probably reconstructions or so, but this is an original, and that may be the only one from that time era.
You're correct, it's an extant structure.
Commissioner Smith?
Which makes it much more precious, yes.
No question. Just a thank you, and I know that this is something that could take a while to see come to fruition, but I echo what Commissioner Neely said, and, you know, every time you go by the McLaughlin House, wow, it's the best it's ever looked in my memory, and it's so great to just see us taking care of it and know that it's going to be around and that people can enjoy it. And, you know, my feelings and my emotions about their Matinger House, and I had a hard time, actually, while you were reading that letter, because it's a really personal thing. And I know that this is possibly the only way that we're going to save this house. And I'm so excited that it's on the table again for discussion, and I just can't wait to see the day that it's preserved. So, thank you so much.
Okay, you want to go ahead?
Well, one, I wanted to share with you all just some materials. One, we recently have begun within the collection, and it is basically the park, and I encourage everyone to come to Fort Vancouver North, which is in Vancouver, Washington, and come visit us. We have a collection of 2 million objects, and one of the first little booklet series we created focuses on Mrs. McLaughlin's sewing tools, which we're working with the McLaughlin Memorial Association, which has it as a sales item, but we're also making it available to schools and at a very reasonable price through the gift shop, but we also make it available at no charge to schools. So I wanted to give you all a copy of that. As well as, just quickly, and I know you all have a full schedule, north of the river, we're in the process of a post-park transfer, and the Vancouver barracks is in the process of transferring to the National Park, and we focused our calendar this year on that, and I wanted to give you all a copy again, which focuses on the collections with the military history. And then finally, an ABC coloring book that you can share. Again, we're making this available to schools throughout the area, and we talk about Oregon trails and the settlement, and it's with regard to the ABC, so I wanted to share that with you.
Commissioner?
I'm quite proud of my organization. We've worked really hard to make a difference in this community, and I appreciate, Doug, your acknowledgement with regard to the painting of the McLaughlin Site. We did it as a labor of love, and our maintenance employees worked long and hard, and it is an incredible job, and if anybody who hasn't seen it, I recommend you take that opportunity. We work very closely with the Oregon shippo's office, and we will be, hopefully this coming year, replacing the asbestos shingles, which are on top of the McLaughlin House, with actually cedar shakes. We will later repaint the Barclay House, again, that's using the infrared light system to take the paint off and repaint it, and then replace cedar shingles on that structure. So there'll be two different roof treatments to show the time periods of the houses, and we're doing this with the support and the involvement of the shippo office. We're looking to underground electrical system between the McLaughlin Site and the Barclay House, in order to allow visitors to go back in time, and it's difficult when you see the electrical lines, so that's another effort. We're in year two of a historic structures report, and at a fairly sizable cost to understand the architectural elements of both homes, we actually discovered, to our concern and dismay, that there were some issues with regard to the foundation of the Barclay House, and working through a 106 process with a shippo here, we made some emergency repairs to that home. We also were able to, it's, collections are wonderful things, they're also very expensive, and we were successful in obtaining over $60,000 this last year to do treatment to some of the more significant pieces within the collection, and we will continue to seek those kinds of dollars. Our hope is to polish the jewel that is already here. The McLaughlin Site is the centerpiece of the crown, I believe, for Oregon City, and very appropriate to be part of the National Park System. And we would like to see it shine in a way that gives it the attention and recognition it deserves, and that is our commitment. You're 100% correct, times are tough, money is not easily obtained, and what we have done at the park is looked creatively in ways in which we could do what we could to move forward, and that's my commitment to you. We will continue to move forward on that site, doing what we can to make long-term improvements, so that it will be here in perpetuity, not just for your grandchildren, but for your grandchildren's children. And I think we are fortunate to be here. So thank you for being so supportive to us and making us part of the community, because I feel that we are part of your community. So, thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Neely.
Just one comment in support of the McLaughlin Memorial Association. You mentioned their gift shop. The Barclay House is on Centre Street, right off of Seventh Street, I'm sure most Oregon City residents know about that, but, and there's these items here, but there are several historical books that are there, you know, even if people have visited the house before and don't have specific interest in visiting it again, but want to know more about the history of Oregon City, and particularly that era associated with McLaughlin's life and so forth, there's some great resources. You mentioned this one here. I think you were indicating the book was for sale, not her tools, right?
Right.
I just want to make sure that was correct, but there's some great resources there, and the purchase of those items, they're well-priced, and they go to support the McLaughlin Memorial Association, which works so hard with you in terms of the programs and so forth that are held at that house.
And they have a wonderful collection of children's toys of the era as well.
That's right.
A good gathering.
Great for holiday shopping.
It is. Any other questions or comments from the commission? Not- Not, yes, Scott, did you have some comment? Oh, sorry. Okay. Tracy, thank you so much for the gifts. We appreciate that, and may I deliver this official letter to you, and we'll look forward to seeing you very soon and with more positive news.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next item on the agenda is the report. We ask all of our advisory committees to make an annual report, and tonight is from the Transportation Advisory Committee, and we have Bill Blanchard, the Chair of the Committee, to give the report. Bill?
Thank you, Mayor Norris. I have two years of reports here. I was just reflecting on this. My mother died in May, and that was when we were going to be putting this together, and then I'm sitting here looking at this, I'm going, today was her birthday, so I thought it was kind of befitting that I was able to present these two today to all of you. I would like to thank you on behalf of the Transportation Advisory Committee for having faith in us to work with you, the commissioners and mayor, to help facilitate some of the transportation issues here in the city. We've got a very viable, vibrant committee that's been working with you, and I've been fortunate enough to be on the committee for about two and a half years, Chair for the last two. There's quite a few items we've done in the last couple of years, some of them overlap. I would like to bring up some of them, just to give you an idea. We've worked with the citizens that have come before us from different neighborhood groups, for instance, up towards the high school with the speed limit sign, which I think Commissioner Smith is aware of, because he teaches there. Some of the things that are really cool to me is the jug handle concept and how that's been facilitated by working with the state and the funding parts of that. To be able to advise you on transportation issues so that you have a little bit clearer understanding was a pleasure for me to be dealing with, and I don't see the three-minute clock going, I'm going to try and keep it short. Do you have any questions about some of the items we've covered? It's in the minutes in the agenda, and the citizens can look at it if they go online and see the kinds of things that we've done as a committee to advise you.
Do you want to point out your goals for next year? I mean, I think those are the things to maybe emphasize.
The 2010 goals for the Transportation Advisory Committee is remain involved in capital projects relating to transportation, resolve a school speed zone issue on Beaver Creek Road at Oregon City High School, remain involved in issues affecting the downtown Oregon City, including a circulation study, parking issues, and the closure of the Oregon City Westland Bridge, provide support for the pavement management utility fee, and handle citizens' requests, continue promoting light rail to Oregon City, hopefully that'll be a reality, and begin work on the transportation system plan update. And I would like to take this time to thank staff, especially Nancy Crusher and Kathy Griffin, for all the support they've given us, and others too, which are probably a little too numerous to mention.
You meet monthly?
Monthly on, oh, we changed. I think it's the third Tuesday of every month. It's available online. You can read our minutes. In fact, the group will be televised from now on, I believe live, if I'm not mistaken, so that's really a cool, exciting.
We're able to webstream, and that really will give access to citizens.
And I think the sound works really well now.
Good, good. Thank you for your volunteer commitment, and it's, your accomplishments are pretty lengthy, and appreciate your goals. So are there questions from the commission? Comments? Thank you very much for bringing us the information.
You're welcome.
Appreciate that. Next, we move into citizen comment, and I have received none. Is there any citizen who came prepared to speak this evening on a non-agenda item? Not, we'll move into, excuse me, oh, sorry, didn't see it. Please come forward, it's our park ranger, Don Salisbury.
John Salisbury, Mashaw Park, Oregon City. I just want to tell folks, it's great to come shopping, but we're closed until February 11th.
Right now, from right now?
Yes, ma'am. You should talk to the one who just left about me, he's working a little bit longer. So if you have some shopping items.
Okay, postpone your shopping.
Yeah, I'm sorry about that. We do have an incredible group of things there, but if it's really an emergency, call me and I'll talk to my boss. We're late.
Great. We did your open house day, or your weekend, that you had the open house, and it just was wonderful, the activities that you had going on, so thank you very much.
So when you said it's a jewel, it is truly a jewel.
It is, it is. Thank you very much.
If I might, people can buy gifts for their grandchildren and children for their birthdays, for various events, not only for Christmas, so you still can do it.
Thank you very much. Okay, looking at the adoption of the agenda, Commissioner Nacita?
I would like to pull item E from the consent agenda.
Item E, down there. Any others? I would like, yes?
I'd like to call 8F.
Yeah, I had a question.
Which one?
8F.
Update in the volunteer management? No?
Minutes from December 2nd.
December 2nd, okay. Anything else? Okay, with your consent, I would like to, on the findings of fact from the McLaughlin Neighborhood Association, due to the fact that Commissioner West has had a new replacement as in the hospital, I would like to postpone the vote on that until she's able to be with us, hopefully at our next meeting. However, if you wish to have comments into the, or on the findings of fact, to direct our attorney to redraft or restate or just talk about it, that would be in order this evening. Okay, with that, Commissioner Neely?
I'm taking a moment to respond.
No, just, I haven't called up the item, I'm just telling you that that's what I'd like to do.
Yeah.
Okay, so we'll move then into general business, and the first one is the findings of fact from the McLaughlin Neighborhood Association appeal. And at the meeting, at our last city council meeting, we deliberated over the call-up of the Planning Commission's approval of the Public Works Master Plan with an extensive discussion. And before us tonight, we have a commission report. We have three items, the findings of fact, conclusions of law and final order written by the attorney, and the summary of the changes to the conditions of approval. We did go through a pretty detailed analysis of that. So let's talk about that, if you'd like, and Commissioner Nacita first.
Okay, I have two points in my review of this extensive document.
Since there are three, could you tell us online, we need to know which one you're referring to? Does we have the documents up here?
You mean Document 7A? Or, I don't know.
Page number, maybe, might make it easier.
Well, actually, he has to tell us which report he's in, so we can punch it on our screen.
I don't think he'll be punching it on the screen.
Okay, go ahead, let's try to find it.
It's the findings of facts.
Okay.
Of law and order. First, I'm curious of our process, because I don't know how, once we had our discussion last meeting, how staff formulates this from our discussion into this document. Who drafted this? Just out of curiosity.
It was a combined effort by the attorney's office and planners. You know, basically what we tried to do was, you know, the staff presented a staff report to you that dealt with a number of issues, some of which the commission actually discussed in some detail, some the commission didn't, and so what we tried to do was deal with all the issues that we need to respond to the appeal that was filed, and then hopefully capture what the sense of the commission was.
Okay, thank you. With that, I'll draw the commission's attentions to the two points that I kind of flagged. In the section of the document that's called December 2nd, 2009 City Commission Deliberations, this is page 17, and I'm looking at items number five and number seven. So I'll go to number five. I don't think this reflects the discussion we had and the specific language of the motion that Commissioner West, I believe, made. I believe Commissioner West's language of her motion was to the effect that the white oaks that staff, the white oaks would be preserved if at all possible. This is not, I don't think this language reflects that. The language here says, "The applicant shall replace any white oaks removed from the site with new white oaks so that there is no net loss of this specific tree type. The trees may be replaced either on the site or off-site, as permitted by the Oregon City Municipal Code during the detailed development plan review." I don't think that's faithful to what the motion was at the last meeting, and, you know, I invite staff to, you know, review the tapes on that.
Or with Commissioner West?
And I'd like to, and I don't know the extent, at this point, this can still be considered, however, I did want to throw out a thought on the city could proceed in a manner that I think is faithful to what Commissioner West's motion was, although not stated at the time because it hadn't been discussed. I toured, as I mentioned at the last meeting, I did a foot tour of that area, and what struck me about that upper area, especially the northern part of it, is the area of the white oaks that were mature. There were two areas. It was on the outer wing of the kind of circular path road around the, a very large and complex basalt rock structure. And what struck me about that whole complex was many old mature white oaks and some newer white oaks were kind of like springing out from this basalt rock complex right through the rocks. So, and then there were also some old white oaks on the periphery of the road and pathway, and I don't know to the extent to which our architects or site designers had considered a design scenario which just leaves that rock, basalt rock cluster intact, and then designs around it. When I was back in planning school, it was just like a challenge for, you know, architects and urban designers to take constraints and try to achieve what we wanted or what, you know, a hypothetical client wanted to achieve within the constraints of the site. And I find that complex a very valuable landscape and ecology with those mature white oaks, and I think I might have mentioned last time that, and West Lindley just, you know, set aside for preservation, a white oak savanna. Metro has purchased much acreage around the Kanema bluffs, in part specifically because of the value of a white oak, you know, ecology there. It kind of, I'm just kind of struck by the fact that something, a landscape and an ecology of this value, at least to me, and it hasn't been inventoried, it hasn't been appropriately factored into the design of this site. So what I wanted the commission perhaps to consider is, and this is what I think is more in the spirit of what Commissioner West's motion was, when, with the language that the, you know, the city shall attempt to save the white oaks if at all possible, is for the more detailed development review and, you know, that land use plan, that we ask our designers and architects to try to come up with a scenario that just leaves that basalt rock cluster alone, because that way you save not only the really impressive landscape element, but also the white oaks, which are basically growing out of that rock cluster. So that's the one suggestion I wanted to make as far as that goes. The second one is number seven, and I have a concern about the last sentence. The commission interpreted ORS 2271.173 to require that implementing code language must be consistent with the approved plan, but that ORS 2271.73 subsection 1 does not require this application to consider specific provisions of the comprehensive plan, since the OCMC implements the plan and review of the plan in this case would be redundant. I'd like, perhaps, this may be nitpicking, but I'd like to leave off that last clause, and review of the plan in this case would be redundant, and the reason so is because we've now adopted in the amendment last July to the OCMC for this same section of the code on concept plans, I think they're called something else now, general, general development plans or something. We actually do require, in that same exact section, we've added a subsection 6, which specifically requires us now to review an application against the entire comprehensive plan. So I can't say the commission finds that, you know, review against the plan is redundant since we have now made a determination, you know, that we should do that subsequently. So I don't know if that would...
I don't see any reason that it has to be in there, so.
Those are my comments.
Yeah, that seems to be obvious. Okay, are there other questions? Commissioner Neely, I think you had.
I believe this will be findings of fact, page 16. If that's not in the findings of fact section, somebody can correct me.
16. Okay, thank you.
One, as a site, as a statistician, I never have understood why traffic monitoring, they take a sample size of one. No statistician would think that was a good idea, however, that's not my concern. The actual concern here is the, is the monitoring, it's discussed in, on number three there on page 16. I want to make it clear to who is doing the monitoring, and that the monitoring is blind to the city. And what I mean by that is that the monitoring is done in a 48-hour period with the city unaware that the monitoring is being done. And I'm not suggesting the city has any biases, but it is in effect a sampling to find out what's going on, and to find out what's going on, the thing that you're monitoring should be unaware that they're being monitored. And I don't know if that's something that goes into the language here or not, but I assume the city is not monitoring itself, that it's bringing in somebody else to do the monitoring. Number one.
We have a noise. The applicant is higher than noise analysis.
And that the city is unaware when the monitoring is being done.
Consider that part of it.
And that should, that's a general, that's a general requirement in any kind of statistical Then, if I may.
Sure. Continue.
Lost my page number, but I'll find it. I've got it, I still use pieces of paper, so.
How about century?
This is under the revised condition of approval.
Oh, okay.
And I'm coming here to number 18. It is stated in, yeah, this is summary. This is on page 19, 18, the conditions of approval, and we say the applicant shall, oh, no, no, that's not the one I'm looking, my apologies. I want to talk about number 28, and that's on page 20. Requested adjustment to exempt the upper site from Oregon City overlay district review is denied, but the applicant shall consult with the State Historic Preservation Office and obtain the approval of the city historic review board before demolishing any building or before undertaking any new development on the site. I agree to that completely. But on page 22, where we've got the public works, a concept plan, it's the following conditions of approval, have been modified where it's a summary, you're stating here that conditions of approval six, seven, eight, and nine have been deleted, and those were actually conditions that the historic review board had already put into play. If they are to be deleted because we're going to this overall review, I believe that still... that still in, in, in this document, these should be referred to. We've got an issue here partially of, that at the point certain things are reviewed, that nobody on the existing historic review committee may even be the same people that exist in the future. And I, I think to, to make sure that the record is complete, that what the historic review board had put forward as conditions before, that the historic review board is made aware of at the time it does any subsequent review. So it knows the history of the decision-making that's already occurred. And so somehow, somehow, whether it's under twenty-eight or however it's dealt with, that we have a record that's part of this as to what the historic reviews decisions had been prior to this decision-making.
Would it be appropriate on the revised conditions of approval, for example, on page eighteen, where, where we leave six, seven, eight, and nine in there and we just underline that they've been deleted by the commission, but the actual condition that was originally adopted remains? Is that sufficient? So that it's in writing in the decision?
That, that would, that would be satisfactory, that they remain.
We'll just leave it in the format that it's in right now, where, where we, we have the condition, but then in front of it we say, "This condition of approval has been deleted by the city commission." And then we really leave the condition behind it so it remains in there. That might address your being able to follow what was done.
That'd be fine.
Detail remains.
Okay, so we'll leave it in the format it's in right now instead of removing those?
Is that my concern, Mr. Attorney?
I, I think it does. I'm a little wary of leaving this and one of the comments I was going to make afterwards was, you know, maybe the thing to do is put strike through just so it's clear, you know, ten years down the road that it's not, part of the condition has been removed and that remains, you know, that if we're going to have this condition deleted and put that and maybe have a reference in condition twenty-eight, that in lieu of condition six, seven, eight, and nine, this, and then it becomes a little bit clearer. So I'll work with him, but we'll make sure that the language of six, seven, eight, and nine is retained in some form in the decision, makes clear that, you know, that the historic review board really should look at these things.
Others, the comments? Okay, we'll expect a revised document then. Tony?
I guess if I could go back to what Commissioner Nocita was talking about, concerning the white oaks on the site and the basalt outcropping up on the, the top of the site. My concern is that, is there an expectation that that basalt be retained? Because we've been working with the applicant and their representatives, because of the nature of how that area is going to be used in terms of stockpiling materials and have, in the requirement to get large trucks in there, the, everything that I've been told throughout this process, because we had the same discussion about what can be kept up there and what can't, is that the turning radiuses are such a way and the ability to effectively use that yard is greatly compromised if that, if, if not made impossible because of that rock, rock outcropping. Now, if we put a condition that says, "You shall investigate," when this application comes in, it's going to, if it's consistent with the concept plan, it's going to go to staff. And my concern is that if we just say, "You'll look at it," there's a lot of discretion there in terms of, so what, you know, the applicant is telling me is that they need to remove that basalt and that, those trees. And so I guess what we were looking for was trying to show that they are saving several trees up there, they, they do need to remove some as part of the development of the site. So I understand your concern, I just, I'm not sure what the expectation is. I don't, I don't want to come back in two years and go, "Why did you approve this?" And we'll say, "Well, they showed us turning radiuses and the yard doesn't function as efficiently as it could or at all." You know, if there's a requirement to keep that, there's a, that, that upper yard does not work.
Need to see that plan. Fifty-six oaks are to be preserved and thirty-eight to be removed. I think we don't know where those are without...
I guess, um...
Nocita?
Thank you. I would want to see a site plan. I mean, planning happens all the time with multiple scenarios. I personally would want to see a site plan that in good faith attempts to retain the basalt outcropping and the white oaks growing out of it. I've already lost this particular battle on this particular plan, and I've already expressed my opinion that I don't think this site, given its landscape and ecological complexity, issues with noise and landslides, is the appropriate site for this facility. And I concede that I've been outvoted on that. But given that we are in a multi-stage process and there will be future land use reviews, given the spirit of what I was hearing, you know, in Commissioner West's motion last time, that the white oaks would, should be preserved if possible, I would be very interested in, if my commission colleagues are interested, in a really good faith effort to have at least one scenario, a site plan scenario, drawn out, calculated, that attempts to achieve the, the functions of the site while retaining those, that outcropping with its white oaks.
I, I would like to have that discussion actually with Commissioner West is here because, since she led that discussion. I'm certainly interested in looking at creative design that keeps as many trees as possible because it is a really, a wonderful, a wonderful location. Without seeing a site plan, I think that's down, I think that's down the road. So I think to keep the flexibility on that, certainly like to keep as many trees as practicable, but certainly want, don't want to inhibit the use of the site as... Commissioner Neely?
I don't have any problem with what Commissioner Nocita is putting forward. We're, I think we're in a funny position. A lot of these restrictions are, that we're putting forward is coming as part of a, a concept plan. And, you know, these kinds of issues have to really be dealt with at the design phase. And so I have no problem with, with that, with that particular notion. We're, I think part of the plan, problem a lot of maybe the residents themselves had with this concept plan is we're putting forward, we were putting forward some, some restrictions at the concept, at the point of the concept plan development that should have probably been left to the design piece. And from that standpoint, I think we could, you know, work, work with the language that you would be looking for.
Through the design process?
Yeah.
Commissioner Nocita?
In response, I would say that if one waits to the latter stage of the process, I think often opportunities get foreclosed. And I think if we give staff kind of a heads up now, earlier in the process, that once, once we move towards that detailed design, you know, phase, that this, we would like to see this considered as one scenario of many.
I agree with you.
Okay.
Okay, so we'll bring this back next time? Do you have a...
I have one more request for your consideration.
Okay.
Concerning the denial of the height adjustment request, where the applicant was requesting an adjustment from thirty-five to sixty feet. Would the, would the commission consider a forty-foot? What that does is it allows a three-story building to be designed appropriately. At thirty-five feet, it would at least give them during the design review, the design of the building, to be able to design a, a building that actually functions as three stories. At thirty-five feet it won't, you will have a two-story building. And I guess that's...
Restricted to thirty-five feet? I don't remember.
My intent, I mean, I put forward this, I, I believe my intent was not to preclude any height, including the forty-foot. And, and...
I thought too.
My assumption is what you're going to come forward with is something that's going to work, period. And if, if it's forty feet, then, then that can be looked at, at that point. If it's thirty feet, it can be looked at, at that point. And so I hope the, I think the language reflected that, actually. It was not, it was not a constraint. It was, we understand that part of the design concept you were looking at was, was looking at that, we want to look at our alternatives as well. And so I, I'm not really willing to entertain it because I think it will come up in the design phase.
Understood.
Right, then we will, you'll be up for a discussion and a motion at the next meeting with the revisions by our attorney and staff. Okay, moving on to the next agenda item.
Mayor, there were two citizen speakers?
Oh, yeah.
Yes, let me find that here. Kathy Roth followed, what, Kathy, please come up together.
Please remember the...
Oh, yes, we still have the same restrictions.
The, the record is, had been closed.
Record is closed, so the purpose of public comment at this point then?
I mean...
We can listen to them, Karen. Procedural issues? We discuss process?
It's, the commission can hear them if, if they want to, but you may be directed to disregard the, the comments, but it's at the commission's discretion.
Questions or comments about procedural issues? That would be the, probably the way to go. The next, the next meeting will be doing the, but we won't take public testimony next week either, so that was, at the next meeting. Okay, is it Kathy?
If I might just make a comment.
Yes, commissioners.
Had they known that restriction, they probably could make some comments during citizens' comments, which they weren't able to do because they thought this is the appropriate moment to deal with them. And so in that regard, I don't think we should have a problem. We probably wouldn't want, would not want to entertain this at all when we actually vote on this.
Our attorney will be listening, so he'll guide us, he'll guide us through this. Okay, Kathy, you're first.
Can we?
Actually, let me just give you the usual song and dance about what we expect when you come up, that you should give your, your name and city in which you reside, and then you have to, after three minutes, and my little marker here should give you that length of time. So, okay, Kathy?
I have three issues, um, excuse me, Kathy Roth, Oregon City, Oregon. And I have three issues I'd like to discuss. One is on twelve fifteen, I spent quite a bit of time, I was home that day, and spent quite a bit of time watching the vehicles, the city vehicles coming down John Adams Street onto Third.
Excuse me, Madam Mayor, this doesn't seem like it's heading towards a procedural issue as much as getting new information into the...
We can't take new information.
Still in the traffic studies, though.
If it's regarding the traffic study, that's really evidence that the commission is considering whether or not they meet the criteria and whether, what types of conditions. Again, it, it doesn't seem to be a procedural issue.
Well, then I'm not sure any of mine are. What, the last was to remind the commissioners that part of their oath is to be the eyes, the ears, and the voice of the people that elected them. And in coming to all of the meetings, I did not hear any citizen say, "Let's go ahead with this." So I would like to question where those eyes and ears and voices went.
Excuse me, Madam Mayor and city councilors, my name is William Gifford, and I live in Oregon City. As co-chair of McLaughlin Neighborhood Association, the appellant, I did have some procedural questions because, like Commissioner Nocita, I wasn't quite sure about how this document got edited. It sounds as though now we know that was crafted by the, by staff and by city attorney. I guess the procedural question that I have is what process goes through if there are errors, if there are factual errors in the findings? Whose responsibility is that to, to bring that to someone's attention?
Madam Mayor, if there are factual errors in them, there are a number of different scenarios that I could envision. One is a factual error about something that isn't relevant to a, a particular criteria or contested issue. In that case, they're really, you know, obviously we strive to get things correct and we want to do our best and we'd love to have it correct, but inevitably there are things that go through. To the extent there is an actual error, factual error that's not supported by the record, it's a, something that comes up at Luba all the time in terms of whether there's substantial evidence to support a particular evidentiary finding by, by the city. The, again, hopefully city staff gets those correct to the things, to the extent someone believes that they are not correct, there's an avenue to, to correct them at, at Luba if they are relevant and material.
The only if it were appealed to Luba, is that correct?
So there is no process for correcting fact at this point unless we discover it?
No. I mean, if, if there's a citizen looks at it and says, you know, there, we've got a factual error, you know, probably the best thing would be to, to take it to staff and say, "Let's, let's fix this." And it says, you know, "There's two hundred trees up there and there's really two thousand," you know, and, and, "Let's, let's get it right." But what, what I'd suggest, if there is a factual error, is that they bring it to staff, yeah.
If there's agreement between, if there is a disagreement between staff and either the applicant or the appellant, who resolves that disagreement?
Ultimately, to the extent there's a disagreement between an appellant who believes something, to the extent, again, they believe it's relevant and material, they can take it to Luba and, and resolve it there. To the extent they bring it to staff and don't feel that they're being satisfied because the staff disagrees with them, you know, it, ultimately, it's, it's the staff who, who bring, brings this to you.
Thank you.
I, I had a couple of quick statements, but a lot of my time was eaten up there, so I'll...
No, that's okay, go ahead.
Thank you very much. I just wanted to point out two things, one from page three and one from page thirteen. On page three, in the middle paragraph, it says, "There is no legal obligation to consider whether alternative sites would more appropriately serve or use, serve the use or if it could be constructed at a lower cost." And there's no legal obligation to see if there's a less expensive way of building this. And on page thirteen, it says, "Nothing in the concept plan approval criteria considered consideration of the overall cost of completing the development proposed in the plan. The city commission does not interpret any concept plan criteria to require completion of an alternative site analysis." And I, I guess the procedural question is, if there's, just because there's no requirement to do a cost analysis on alternate sites, does that mean because it isn't a condition of approval that the city commission will ignore the cost of the development?
Madam Mayor, what I'd suggest is that what you have in front of you is a land use decision, and in making that decision, you're, you have a certain box that you're working within, and those box are, that box consists of the criteria. To the extent the city commission is going to consider cost, it's going to be outside of the land use decision. It may well be in another form when they look at budgeting, when they look at other, other things, but that is not part of, what the findings try to, to say is, those are outside the box that we're in, in this land use proceeding.
That's all I needed to know. Thank you very much.
Erica, I came up.
You're on, you're on. Paula Blackwell?
That would be a good conversation then to have. If others, if others have factual things to, to, to report, please direct those to Tony Conkle. Would that be correct? Great, that would be, that would be good. Yes, yes, he'll make us aware of changes.
Certainly to the extent, are there any changes from what you see tonight? You'll be, we'll identify those and make you aware of them.
Good question. Okay, next, Commissioner Neely.
I just have to take exception to the notion that we, we weren't the eyes and ears. Actually, many of the changes in the conditions were in direct responses to citizens' comments. So I don't think it's fair to say that somehow that we aren't responsive. Now, certainly the commissioners here may feel that we weren't as responsive to some of these things that we, we, that we were working with, in which case they, they may, and maybe even a majority, may vote against the, against this. But I don't think it's fair to say that we, we haven't been responsive. The fact of the matter is that we have an area that is zone institutional and we work within that particular zoning. And I know there are, there are many residents who expressed dissatisfaction for this occurring in their neighborhood and felt that residential would be a better, a better use of it and public work should go to someplace else. But in fact, that's not what we have in our zoning. And, and I, and so I, I think people expected us to deny this, and of course, we haven't taken the final action on this, but it is in our comp plan, and it goes to a correction I'm going to actually make in the minutes later on, that I was on the commission when the comprehensive plan was adopted, I believe it was two thousand four.
Yeah, it was. That was on also.
I don't remember a single... I don't remember a single public comment opposing the zoning of that area as institutional at that time. The Neighborhood Association, at that time, would have had the capability to respond to it, that did not happen. And so, we had this comprehensive plan that we had a great deal of testimony on. I mean, it wasn't a lack of testimony, but...
Over two years.
For two years. It was a long period of time, and I never heard an objection at all expressed to the zoning of this area as institutional. And I think we are bound to work within that particular framework. And, you know, had these concerns been brought out at the time that we were doing the zoning, it'd be a different story, I think, but that did not happen.
We'll take this up then at our next meeting. Thank you. Next item of general business is resolution 9-35, a DLCD grant for downtown redevelopment. A grant that's being written by, actually, Dan Durantlaw will give us the information that we need to do for a supportive resolution this evening.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor, and members of the commission. The planning department and Main, our Main Street has been working and putting together a grant from the State Department of Land Conservation and Development for a closer look at our regional center in downtown, and really several purposes for this grant, and I'll just summarize some of the main ones. As you know, we've been doing, we've been working on several studies downtown and in the regional center, dealing with parking, circulation, sidewalks, and our consultant, Dave Leland, working with the Urban Renewal Commission, has taken an initial look at some of the possible land uses that would, that could help renovate and rejuvenate our downtown area. So, working upon that and taking it into the next step, part of this grant would be used to look at those studies, achieve consensus on the direction of those studies, and then with that in mind, go ahead and explore a number of different development alternatives, specific development alternatives for our regional center and downtown, and analyze those developments in terms of how realistic they are, in terms of, is there a market to support those type of uses? Is there an adequate return on investment to support those uses? And how does it match with all the planning documents that we've already adopted? Some of the other things that we'd want to do in the grant is to look at possible improvement on our design guidelines, particularly in determining a better sense of place for our regional center in our downtown. And one of the ways that we can do that is by looking at a better definition of our entrances to both our downtown and our regional center. And finally, and probably most importantly, is to come up with an action plan that would identify financing, specific development schemes, and identification of implementation responsibilities in terms of different stakeholders in downtown, the city, and all the various agencies, such as ODOT, that are really part of this analysis. We've, we've applied for the grant, we've asked for $120,000 from DLCD, and an additional $28,000 would be in-kind matching of city work. That would put the grant at $148,000. We're hoping that would do what we need to do. And this is really the final element of our application. They have everything else, and one of the important parts of this is a resolution from the city commission supporting it. So with that, I'll answer any questions.
We often need to know that the supporting, that the agency is in full support of the action. Other questions about this? And may I have a motion, please? Commissioner Nacita?
I actually have some proposed amendments to the text of the resolution.
Resolution, okay.
I'm concerned that the text of the resolution does not include the Citizens' Involvement Council as a party to this process, and to me, this process is precisely one of the reasons that we established the CIC. So if my commission colleagues are amenable, I would like to propose the following as amendments to this resolution in paragraph three. I would like the language of the first two sentences to read, "Whereas the city desires an action plan that will provide the city commission, the Urban Renewal Commission, Main Street, Oregon City, and the Citizen Involvement Council," parentheses, "CIC," and other stakeholders. And then in the next paragraph, I would like the language to read, "Whereas this project will communicate the market realities of the regional center and downtown to citizens through their CIC, property owners, and community leaders."
May I request you read the first, whereas, again?
It's just to insert the word "CIC" following Main Street, Oregon City.
Citizen Involvement Council.
Citizen, yeah.
And then "CIC" in parentheses.
Right, to identify it, and then...
We're going to do this, I guess if we're going to add participants, I would like to include the Oregon City Chamber of Commerce.
Okay, so, Main Street, Oregon City, comma, CIC, and OC Chamber of Commerce, and other stakeholders. Is there any others we've forgotten on that?
Other will probably do it, but I think, you know, a few of the ones pop up into mine.
Right, those are the main groups we have in the community that have broad...
Somebody might say, "You're wrong, we missed one," but...
Probably we did, but other hopefully carries that. Is there any objection to inserting those words? Okay, resolution now carries that. Do we have those written? Now, may I have a motion for adoption of resolution 9-35?
I will move the city commission approve resolution number 09-35 as amended.
Second? By Commissioner Nacita, seconded by Commissioner Smith. No further comment or discussion. Seeing none, Nancy, the vote, please.
Commissioner Nacita?
Aye.
Commissioner Neely?
Aye.
Commissioner Smith?
Aye.
And Mayor Norris?
Aye.
Motion passes 4-0. Next is resolution 9-34, establishing the Oregon City Tree Committee, something we've been talking about for probably six years at least. Okay, on this one, the staff person is...
Right here.
Andrew Algen.
Thank you, Mayor. We've been working, as you mentioned, over the last year. We've met both with the Planning Commission and the Park and Recreation Commission, PRAC, and they're in support of this resolution. Just a brief summary, there are four things that a city has to do to achieve the status of Tree City. One is to establish a tree committee, and that's really what this resolution would do. The other three issues that have to be addressed, one is to develop a tree ordinance, and we've done that. Three is to establish a forestry program with an annual expenditure of at least $2 per capita, and for us, that's approximately $60,000. And attached to your resolution, you can see an itemized list of all the money that we've spent in the last year, and last year, we spent approximately $80,000, which is well over the $2. It's approximately $2.64 per capita. And so, we've met those requirements. The only other requirement is to hold an Arbor Day, not an Arbor Day, but an Arbor Week, April 5th through 9th, and that is really the main function of the tree committee, is to plan that event. It's not to say that the tree committee can't do more, but that's what's required in order to gain that status as a tree committee. And based on discussions with Planning Commission and PRAC, if you look at the resolution attached in the back, you can see that they've suggested that the tree committee consists of the Planning Commission, one member from PRAC, and then one member from the public with some expertise in, as an arborist. So with that, I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Mr. Neely?
I guess I have, this is a committee. It's not clear to me why all the representatives of the Planning Commission would be members, or alternatively, that only one member of the Parks and Recreation Committee could be members. I know the Parks and Recreation Committee considers various other things, and the expertise may have only one or two people that deal with trees, but I would think that same thing applied to the Planning Commission as well. So I guess I have a problem with all of the members of the Planning Commission being part of this particular committee. It is a committee, it's not the function of the Planning Commission, per se. Secondly, and I don't really know how to deal with it, but, and this isn't a recommendation unless we have a way of dealing with it, but we do have our, we do have our situation where we've actually put into our code the formation of conservation districts. Now, although a person that is actually skilled in urban forestry may in fact be able to discuss that, it's not clear to me that a, an arboricultural person, per se, would. That is, because when you're dealing with a, and my recommendation, I guess, would be perhaps to get in two, two individuals if we can find them. One that in fact is skilled in urban forestry, because I think they would be in a position, better position to talk about aspects of the tree ordinance as it applied to our conservation easements, not easements, conservation district. No, that's not it either. Conservation.
It's an easement.
You were, I think you were discussing easements earlier.
Yeah, conservation easement is what I should have said. And then a horticulturist, I don't have a problem with.
Let me just mention again that this, this committee, the only thing that the, that's required of this committee is to plan for the Arbor Day event, and they're required to meet twice a year. So if, I guess that's the question, do you want to assign other related tasks to this group, or do you want them to just focus on, on the Arbor Day? And that, I guess, would have a lot to do with who you'd want to put on this group.
I guess, I guess I pull my first one out. I don't know why you have all the Planning Commission members on an Arbor Day committee.
I think that part of the reasoning was, is they spent a lot of time working on the tree ordinance that was adopted, so they had a lot of discussions on that. And they also are involved in a lot of the reviews, master plans, site plans, and the whole issue of landscaping is, and tree preservation is part of their discussion.
Also staffing as well as not having to have an additional meeting night?
That's part of it, too.
So it makes it easier. Commissioner Nacita?
Section three on page one really doesn't say that the only task of the tree committee shall be to plan Arbor Week. It says the first task. So the resolution itself seems to envision that the tree committee would be tasked with more than that particular issue. I have a question. I was looking at the city's website today, and I saw a list of inactive committees, and a tree committee was actually listed on our website as at least one inactive committee.
A subcommittee of the Natural Resources Committee.
Okay, so, that's kind of actually where I'm going. The tree committee is not set forth in our ordinance itself, a tree committee. However, a natural resources committee is. If you read the ordinance about the Natural Resources Committee, one of its dedicated responsibilities does concern trees. And I have been very concerned, since I've been on commission, about a lot of things that we have just been putting off ad infinitum. One of them is the reconstitution of the Natural Resources Committee. And I'm not sure why this is necessary. I'm concerned about the Planning Commission being this committee when in fact we have a ordinance mandated committee, the Natural Resources Committee, who's in the text of the ordinance, is responsible for trees. So on that basis, I'm not sure I can vote for this. I would rather it be refashioned to work in the Natural Resources Committee to satisfy whatever their requirement there is to attain the Tree City USA designation.
And may we put this off to our retreat or work session, because reforming the Natural Resources Committee is going to require, again, the priorities, staff, and how we, I think we always talked about redrafting the missions, because they'd have about 24 different items that they had to cover. So if that's acceptable to have a discussion in the future, as you mentioned prioritizing, okay with staff? All right, let's put this forward then. Thank you. Next, task force on habitat enhancement, and that is Mr. Patterson.
Actually, that's back to the commission, because this is your issue, so if there's anything we can, any questions we can answer, or any direction you want to give us there, is what we're looking for.
Okay, as I recall the last discussion, that there were some holes in the, in our understanding of how it was going to happen, you know, again, who was staffing at the scope? Again, it seems to me that this might fit under our priorities also, if you wish to. I don't mean to sound like I'm putting everything off onto the retreat, but it is a more relaxed time to sit and talk about priorities and goals, and what we want certain committees to do, and where we want staff time to be directed. You want to spend some more time on it tonight, or do you want to move it over to a work session? We have a January work, well, we haven't entirely, we haven't cut out the January work session, and then we also have the retreat. So where would you like to spend your time on this one?
I guess I have no problem in dealing with it at the retreat, but I do feel that, it actually goes back to what Commissioner Nacita said. It would normally be a function of the Natural Resource Committee to look at this particular issue. We do have, we do have the, as a goal for this year, the Natural Resource Committee. I would, I would, I would take, if you're, we're going to put in the retreat, I would focus this as a, as a goal still to be addressed in the current, in the current budget year, as opposed to setting up a new goal in the next year, and then talk about this particular action being part of that consideration for this year, as opposed to putting it off until goals that we're going to set for the next budget year.
Patterson?
The only issue that, when you bring this up, I think you do need to look at is, again, you need to look at your organizational capacity. That's one of the issues, one that's fell apart before, so as you begin to design whatever committee structure that you wish, I think you need to look at the resources you have, and if these are truly going to be functioning committees and deal well, we need to talk about additional resources, which goes back into those budgetary issues that we've been chatting about as well. And I think you just need to factor all that into that discussion when you have that.
I think Commissioner Neely's suggestion is a good one, to look at it in total, so that we have the categories of the natural resources issues, like the tree committee and like this, and then in context of the, we're going to have big facilities issues too, so, and one of them is coming right up. So with your, there is no objection to moving this then to a work session or retreat? Okay. Next, then, let's move on to one of those facility issues, and that is the end of the Oregon Trail Interpretive Center, and we've expect to put out an RFP for a staff personnel organization, so we have that before us this evening. Mr. Patterson?
Yes, Madam Mayor, members of the commission, this is actually a two-part item, and I think you'll find that in the attached documents. You have a copy of the RFP that is in draft, and we're getting ready to send that out, and we're just looking for if you have any additional refinements. I know Commissioner Neely has indicated that we need to add a little bit more history and the, kind of the preface to that, and we're working on that piece to do. But also, when you look at that, as well as the deliverables in there and anything in there that you see, to make sure that meets with what you're looking for, and then if we can finish those thoughts up this evening, we can get that ready and get that on the street, and hopefully get that moving. That's one thing you may want to look at this evening. The other question that you have asked about is the ability of the city to step in to some type of interim arrangement of operating the center, and we are preparing to do so as of the 1st of January, if that is your direction. Again, this is a little bit of a wag, kind of like some of the other numbers I have shared with you this evening, but in talking with Lynda Bell, kind of some of the reviews we've had with discussions that Jim Lefler has had... had with discussions that Jim Lefler has had with CHP and their operations, looking at this to go into an operational mode, it looks like it's going to take at least two and a half individuals. We've, as you'll see in that memo, we've converted those from what those folks were receiving in terms of compensation, to where we felt they would fit into the city's range. You have to factor in there some of the other operational costs and maintenance and things of that nature. So, on a yearly basis, and again, depends how long we're in this mode, and I think by the time we get into a full-blown, long-term plan, it may be a year. I think you're looking somewhere between 150,000 and 250,000, probably that 200,000 range is probably what it's going to be. And again, our desire, if we're going to step into that, I think you need to be prepared to open it and keep it open until we transition into something long-term. I think this opening and closing of that center doesn't serve Oregon City very well, definitely doesn't serve the center, and so you'll need to look at that cost and reflection of your budgetary priorities as well. But that's your call there. So, those two items.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Smith?
Let's see if my voice is working. Okay, so, I don't really have too many concerns about the request for proposals, excuse me. So, I'm actually pretty comfortable with that, but the memo really confused me, and, and connecting the two together, I mean, they're both the same, same site really, but in the memo, it talks about the Visitor Center and the Interpretive Center, and cross-references them all, and it's so hard to, it's confusing to me about what we're really talking about. So, the first question, just for clarification, is that, on page one, that to date, $30,000 remains for the current fiscal year, expiring June 30th, so that's the remaining of, that's the, the total for the year is $60,000, and there's 30 left through June, and that's from the county, TDC. All right, and so then, when it's talking about, on page two, that we estimate it would take approximately, approximately 150,000 to 250,000 to manage the facility, it's talking about the end of the Interpretive Center facility, not the Visitor Center, right?
Well, it's actually talking about running that center. It's focused primarily, the whole, yeah.
Whole thing.
Whole operation. Because again, even if you're going to operate the Visitor Center, you have to maintain the facilities there and the grounds, so that's all part of it.
So, where that large number is to the whole facility, how, we would be then, so the $60,000 from TDC would continue to come, and the city's portion would be just staffing, correct?
It's staffing.
Or the Visitor Center.
Well, what, well, what you, what we looked at there is two things, so we've heard two things from you, is, one is the Visitor Center, and that's where the 60,000 comes in. You also talked about kind of operating the theater, and that's where we looked at that, probably, we can do that two and a half, and it may take a third person, and that's why that range is so great in there, depending on really what we end up with staffing. But that is to run the Visitor Center, man the 800 number, and have some type of operation of the theater, if we can get that back up in operational mode. There may be some additional work there needed with the video equipment, we're not quite sure what state that's in. I'm not sure the exhibits, if all that stuff is there, and what it takes to kind of get that open. Then you've got things like, I sent you a memo this week, the HVAC unit, looked like we got about a $700 cost coming up this week on that. Those sorts of things you've got to maintain, to maintain, again, the facility and the grounds, and then provide staffing to run the Vic Center, and if you want to do the theater, we're going to have to kind of figure that one out as well. And we're still looking for some volunteer help to make it all work.
I don't know if it's just my brain, but it almost feels to me that I would have liked to see kind of two different memos, because I can't see, I can't determine the difference between, I mean, they're related, but we're referencing Visitor Center and end of the Oregon Trail Interpretive Center, and sometimes just facility, and sometimes just center, and it's so confusing, I don't know what it's really referring to on any given moment. But I'll just state again, my concerns with, the concerns with the Visitor Center itself and the city of Oregon City paying for the staff, my feeling is if the city of Oregon City is paying for staff for a regional Visitor Center, that we're really paying as a city to promote the entire county, and that if we're paying the majority or all of the staff that's there, then they should be promoting the city. And, you know, in the way that we're promoting the city, we are essentially promoting the county, because the majority of the sites are in the city. But to, to, for the city of Oregon City to take on the staffing of a county-wide regional center, or Visitor Center, is, is something that I'm concerned about, because even though the majority of the sites are in Oregon City, other cities in this county have sites that are marketed by the Visitor Center, and my question is, why then wouldn't those cities contribute some to the staffing of the Visitor Center as well? And now, granted, our, our share might be larger, because the majority of the sites are here, but, and I guess, in a conversation with the mayor, there was a little answer to that, in regards to the fact that with Oregon City Civic Improvement Trust, there's a portion of our hotel motel taxes that goes directly to us rather than the county, and so that, you know, some of the staffing might offset that, but I just, I, I, the one that really bothers me is we're paying for someone really to answer the phone for the county, and I, I don't, I don't know if.
I think I can answer this, because I think you have to put it in perspective on what we're doing here, and there's two steps. One is an interim step, and then, and all that's in place for, if we go more than a year, I think we've probably made a misstep, because it's really just transition to get the center open, to do the things you've asked for, until we get this larger plan in place. The TDC actually pays for the Visitor Center with the 60,000. What we're saying, if we're going to step in it, it's going to cost us more than 60,000 to do that. If we're doing that long-term, I too would have a question.
Right.
I have a question, even doing it in the interim personally, but if that's the direction of the commission until we get a long-term plan, that's all this is for, just kind of outlining what it would take to step into the breach.
Okay, and then one more question, I think I know the answer. The comparison from Visitor Center manager at 12:50 an hour, that it equates most closely to our Parks and Recreation programmer at the salary of $26 an hour, so almost double, I'm assuming that's because they're not actually, that person is not actually going to be just doing the Visitor Center, but they're going to be actually supervising the whole site?
Now, what you, what you get into there, Mr. Lefler can explain this probably better than I, is first of all, you have, this will become a city employee, you have union issues, and you have a benefit package. Again, that's all part of those issues, we get into negotiations, we talk about our costs, that's why it costs us more to do this than it would be if CHP has been operating it.
We're going to be paying for someone to operate a county Visitor Center, and we're going to double the salary.
You want nonprofits to do this?
Again, I'd be glad to talk to you about some of those issues, and what that, that package is, because that does increase that cost. So, that's what we're.
Would you like to comment?
Tech is saying the mic isn't on, and he's not picking up anything, so, it's not coming through, so you might.
The $60,000 from TDC goes to what? The building itself, or the staffers?
That's what they've been paying staffing with, is what my understanding is. In this case, we'd have a budget, that would come in as a revenue, as you see, that revenue is going to be taken up for personnel costs.
Okay. And then, the only last thing is, it says on the bottom of page one on the memo, that the commission has expressed an interest in having the, the center operational for the upcoming summer and field trips. I know that Commissioner Neely brought that up, and I remember discussing it, but I'm not sure how, if we were all kind of on the same page of that, or if we were on the same page to kind of think about it and discuss it in the future, but I don't know if we were really all as a commission in favor of trying to open it for the summer. I think it was, it was a topic that we wanted to maybe think about, but I don't know if we, I think that this might imply we are supporting it a little bit more than we really have talked about it, but I'm not sure.
Actually, I thought you met, didn't you meet with the group that was hoping to do a volunteer opening for school groups? They didn't come in? I thought they were to talk. Jim, Jim, you met with them?
Yes, I, I met with the, actually, it was, was part of Mr. Fowler and, and the comptroller there at the Visitor Center that discussed trying to open for school groups, and they were putting together a proposal to, that they, they felt was, in fact, be able to help pay for the center, if the funding from the school groups would go into the revenue for the, for the Visitor Center, and effectively help pay for itself once we, once we got it opened.
The one thing, too, the, there was a proposal, and I don't, I can't remember all the details, where folks were kind of going to do that, and then if it earned money, then we'd pay them, and, which was, you know, sounded really good, but from us stepping into that, we really couldn't do it that way. We would run a breach of, I think, most of the rules that we're governed by with having folks work.
As I recall the discussion, it was, we were in favor of looking at that if it was going to, you know, pencil out, and.
So, we don't think it is? I mean, that, is it still on the table for?
That's why I've given you a range, it depends on really what we do here. I think you get towards, you know, that 150, 200, if we're just running the Visitor Center and grounds, if we're operating the other, I think that's going to bump it up maybe closer to that 250 portion. So, really, it's a question where you want to go. Can we do it? Yes, we can. Is it an impact on the budget? Yes, it is. I'll let you wrestle whether it's a new program or not.
All right, thank you.
Okay, so, back to the RFP, does anyone have any questions about that before we report adoption?
Who's on your speaker's list?
Yeah, there's some guy down there.
Oh, there's some guy there? Looks like Commissioner Doug Neely.
I might actually call Mr. Salisbury, the park ranger up here, because he heard, he heard my suggestion on the school groups, and he said, the school groups have already, they've already planned their visitations for the rest of the school year, so the chance of having anybody in the school district contributing money to the visitation of that site is, is, you know, just doesn't exist. I think it's the discussion then what goes into the next school year, so for this, for this transition, I don't think it's that, that meaningful. If Mr. Salisbury wants to speak to that issue, I'd invite him to do so.
The other thing you want to factor into that is, if we get into an interim situation, what is your estimate on how long it's going to take to transition into a long-term program? And that, I don't know, so.
To have an interim without knowing the long term, but I'm eager to get this on the road, the, the RFP, because I think the sooner we get that, the task force together.
This question came up, and Mr. Salisbury happens to be here, maybe he would like to speak around.
Oh, did, okay. My understanding is that, that some of the school groups haven't scheduled yet, but come on up, if you'd like to give us some wisdom on that.
Take these chairs off the rollers. Most schools book in late fall, but there's a number that start booking about January or February. One of the things that happens within Oregon, or within all museums, is they will, they will book multiple museums. For instance, they might book the Trail Museum and us, or I might book us, working with Erma Tinger House, our moot. So, one of the things that draws schools from all over to Oregon City is a chance to meet with, go to several historic sites. What happens is, and I was just talking to somebody at Kara School this morning, or this afternoon, was that they need to look for multiple sites. For instance, the McGlothlin House, which is open, starts opening February 11th, we are not enough of a draw, because we can only hold up to X amount of students. They need something else to do. That's why working together with other museums works. If we had something down at, and I'll use the term wagons, something then from the D to C, et cetera, that would draw more kids here. Last year in Oregon City, I'm going to say about 1,500 kids that we drew at the McGlothlin House, we could easily handle a lot more than that, but because of wagons, at that time, we're in a, we're not sure we're at mode, we lost a lot of bookings. So, whatever we do down there, it will draw more kids in, draws more kids in, draws more adults in. So, to everybody.
Thank you.
I think this is an issue we need to look for the next school year, as opposed to this one.
It needs to be on the table.
If I could just throw one more comment, school districts need, when they, when they call us and say, what can we do? If I can say there's a plan being worked on to reopen the wagons next year, or open a, a venue there at the wagons, that will help in their planning, because they're looking not just this year, but the following year. So, if we could at least be able to say that, when you come to the point where you can say that. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, may I have a motion, please?
Yeah.
Neely?
We don't, we don't have the wording for the introduction here, but that is apparently going to, going to happen, and with that, I'll go ahead and move the approval of sending the RFP out with the, with the introduction as to the importance of the site.
Second.
By Commissioner Neely, second by Commissioner Smith. Is there further discussion on this item? Seeing done, the vote, please, Nancy.
Hi.
Commissioner Smith?
Hi.
Senator Norris?
Hi.
Motion passes for zero. Hopefully we can get that one on the road. Next is, and also, we've been dealing with other, with historical facilities, oops, my thing just went down.
Before we move off this item.
Yes.
We won't do anything in regards to the interim management of the Vic Center and those grounds.
Like what?
Well, are we going to step in and become the employer of, of the folks at the Vic Center?
I'd love for it to remain a nonprofit, so that we can continue to offer it, but I don't know how that'll work.
The only way that could work, and it seems they're agreeable, but is that we continue to contract through CHP.
Well, if, if that's folding.
I don't know which one is worse.
If that's folding into.
That's how it's being operated right now.
Yeah, if, it's my understanding that that may be folding into the Clackamas County Historical Society, so, but I don't think that's worked out at all, and.
I think we need to assume.
I think we probably have to do it for stability purposes.
And we don't, we don't leave people hanging next year who have a, you know, who do impact, get a salary no matter how small, so, I think we have to assume that responsibility.
I think we need to keep the county as a partner. That's a very important partner right now.
And they've indicated that they will do that. Again, you, you kind of see the cost, you can understand that's, that's going to go up some. And I, all you really need is kind of agree that we're going to do that, well, probably a motion second, and then you'll have to move money out of contingency before the year's over to fund that portion that's, that we've stepped into.
I would actually like to look at that when we consider all the facilities that we're talking about, and in that context of our retreat, where we look at expenditures of all the facilities, because some of the costs that you're suggesting is possibly optional, like certain maintenance items, I mean, I haven't, I haven't really seen the budget in a budget format.
Yeah, within a, an amount, we are kind of, have assumed the maintenance of things coming up there. If not, it would have already.
But, but, you know, we don't have to do it all the first year. I mean, I, I guess I would, so you've assumed an amount in.
This is not, this is not bringing, those numbers I'm giving, it doesn't have anything to do with trying to address that backlog of.
Well, like Commissioner Smith, I.
This is just trying to get through the year.
Okay, I was a little fuzzy on what the numbers mean, too. I would really like to see it as a budget, as a budget, the next time we talk about it, so that I'm really clear what we're paying, paying for, to see if there really are options in any of that. Visitor Center, I'm thinking about.
Basically, what you're going to have, and Jim, help me here, make sure I don't overstate this, I think to run the Vic Center, manage the 800 number, I think we're talking two or two and a half employees?
Correct, because of security.
Yep, and then you're going to be maintaining the grounds. Yep. And then you're gonna be maintaining the grounds in as simple form as we can. We're gonna be taking care of any maintenance issues come up, like the HVAC units, things of that nature. We're paying the utilities, we'll pay garbage pickup, those sorts of issues. That's gonna run you in that, probably around 150,000 bracket right there.
It's my understanding that I thought the half, I thought one of those two and a half that the county was, was a volunteer. No? Those are all...
They have, they have volunteers who work there, but there's, there's one full-time employee and one part-time, .5, 20 hours a week. And then they also have the educational coordinator who we're trying to fit into the proposal as well, but we, that's not included in, in our initial...
And the educational coordinator...
2.5, though, so it's really 1.5 plus?
Well, it's currently 1.5, but to get security because of...
I understand that site...
The comptroller, actually, Gail, who's leaving, is, is the other security person.
Okay.
She, when she's working there on site, she's considered the other security person, so.
Okay, that's, that's, I didn't quite understand that arrangement.
Probably have a park ranger during that interim period until he goes...
There you go.
He's not, he's not working for two months, I heard that. Scott, do you want to time in here for that?
Oh, you're on the next topic, sorry.
Actually, here for the next item.
Commissioner Neely.
I started sitting down, and then you...
I want to, I want to be clear in terms of the certainty of the person that's there, that they in fact have somebody that they're contracted with. That is an issue, is it not?
That's the issue.
That's the issue.
Mm-hmm.
I presume the beginning of January, that issue comes into play.
Well, my understanding is, I don't know really what the status of CHP is, but we had been asked if we were willing to do that, and that's why I provided these numbers. If we're gonna step into it, again, we would be the employer. That kind of adds to some of the costs and some of the other pieces in terms of maintenance we've already beginning to pick up.
What I'm assuming is that, or what we would pick up the contract for would be, in fact, the, the monies, the remaining monies that are already in the contract. I mean, this is not a case of city employees at this point. It's to maintain the contract...
They would become city employees.
Pay them, they have to be city employees. So my, my suggestion would be that we use CHP till it goes away, just because it's a really easy conduit. It's just a pass-through, and that saves, saves us a little bit of cost, unless you're concerned about that. I mean, I'm...
I guess I'm not concerned, because at this point, I don't think we need, we should pick up additional money to do this until we figure out what we're doing. I'm just...
Again, what, what they indicated, if, what they need to run the Vic Center, they need more than one employee on site. They wanted us to pick up the garbage collection, and they want to do us the ground maintenance, which we're picking those pieces up, but we know as well as we get in there, we're gonna have to do a little bit more. If you're gonna run something like that, you've gotta run it. You can't just kind of give a lick and a promise and hope that folks will continue to come, because after a while, it'll turn them off if you're not doing it right.
Are we clear on direction?
No.
It's a...
Okay. So are we clear that we want the visitor's center to continue? I think we've got that, right? Other questions about that? Okay. Who, who pays and when is the issue?
Here's what I understand, I think my direction is. You want me to, you want the visitor's center to stay open. If we can work that with arrangement between TDC and CHP for however long is fine, until we figure out a long-term strategy. However, if that were to look like it was gonna close, we need to be prepared to step into it.
Okay with that. Commissioner Nusseth?
I'd like to pose some questions to Mr. Lefler first. 2.5 employees. If we took over the VIC as of January 1st, then we would have 2.5 city employees with benefits?
No.
Okay, because I don't know, I don't know how the half employee works in that context.
Anything less than 20 hours a week is considered a, an on-call, or, you know, .5 FTE, 20 hours a week is benefited. Anything above .5 has, has benefits and is part of the bargaining unit. So if, if we can have the employees who work just less than, than .5, less than 20 hours a week, we don't have to be concerned with benefits, and we can pay them, effectively, we're bound to pay them minimum wage.
Okay. And so how does this stack up? Are we, are we talking one employee that would be a city employee with benefits?
Correct, one representative employee.
And then the one, the remaining 1.5 would be three different people at 20 hours a week?
That would, because it's a, it's a seven-day operation, so that would, for coverage, security purposes, it would, unless we scale back, that's what, we're based it on seven-day operation, so that's what we would need to cover, you know, in 40 hours for the work week for the full-time employee, and then, et cetera.
Okay. And the, the work that needs to be done, would, would that require three separate employees, or could we have one person doing two of it, and then one person working half-time? As opposed to three people working half-time?
You know, as far as increasing the FTE so that more, you'd have more benefited employees, is, I didn't quite follow your question.
Well, that, that yes, and also just as far as the skills needed to do each one of these positions.
Well, for the, the minimum wage positions, and that's, that's pretty much what we're, we're looking at there, they, you know, work counters, from my estimation, work the counters, answer phones, very somewhat minimal clerical type, type work. The, the full-time, as I say, they're the recreation coordinator, they would be scheduling trips, scheduling, coordinating with schools, ordering supplies for the, for the counter, I mean, for the, to resupply that they have some things in the, in the visitor's center. So, you know, I've, for, for a on-call person, I think that, you know, less than .5, that, that's minimum wage, and that's, that's effective. If we, if we increase their FTE above .5, then we have additional costs associated with the benefits, and also, we have to pay them under the AFME salary scale. So that's, that's, those costs will increase significantly if we go above 20 hours a week for those folks.
Under this proposal, one person would be full-time with benefits?
That was the proposal, yes. One, full-time benefits, the others are effectively what we say on-call, or less than 20 hours a week, and, and provide the coverage around that.
I'm not concerned with that cost. I would, if we're going to take over the operation, I would prefer to go that way than having CHP continue this. If the commission wants to go in another direction, I will defer to the commission, but as this is proposed, I'm fine taking it over as of January 1st.
Let me also indicate that I think what you're looking at with the two and a half, and Jim, correct me if I'm wrong here, is probably a bare minimum, because you're a full-time person, you know, which does the higher skills. That really doesn't provide backup, Jim, unless I'm wrong, in case of sickness, or if they're offering anything of that nature. So you don't, we'll have to figure that one out, too. So you may not take another part-time person at a higher level to kind of at least be on-call to cover that sort of stuff.
And one of the issues that we have is that without a nonprofit to do backup volunteers, which is what used to happen, we don't have a volunteer cadre really to step in there that we, really, there is, there are volunteers, but there's no nonprofit kind of working it.
And to amplify that, volunteers working within a union environment is sometimes problematic.
Oh, that's true.
Because if they're doing, if they're doing work for, that are, that should be done by a, by an employee, we can get ourselves in trouble for that. Of course, they're doing work. If they're just doing volunteer stuff, that's a different story.
But if it's going to be status quo, I don't, I don't have any problem using the pass-through, you know, if it is not making any change, and we're not really going to make any change when we convert it. So I'm, I'm kind of happy with what Commissioner Neely's, I mean, I'm okay with that, and I think that may happen fairly soon, so.
Um, no, my preference is the other way.
Saves us a little money. Do you need a motion on that?
Need to make sure I'm going in the direction the commission wishes me to go.
Here's a swing one on the...
I think I, I think I know what the direction is, as long as you are, have consensus around that, I can, I can move it.
Okay. Letting a CHP do it, or going the city way?
Jeez. Okay. Well, the, the question came up, can any of these hours be on contract, and that was be, under the assumption that we had a contract in effect, and I think that at this point, to, to get a contract by January 1st would be probably panic, you know, so I'm...
Well, yeah, one of the other scenarios that we could look at is if we have a little more time, is see if there's a contractor who wants to step into that, and the city could enter into that contract with someone else. I don't know if that provides a cost savings or not, but...
Like we do the elevator?
Yeah.
That's a nice scenario to look at, actually.
I think it's, that was mentioned at one time by somebody up here. I can't remember...
We didn't have facts, I think.
Who it was.
Yeah, yeah, that was a good idea.
It's a discussion point.
Yes.
I think so. Okay, so now you have kind of the direction? Okay. All right, well, we'll be talking about that a little bit more, and hopefully the visitor's center is...
I was tempted to have the city manager say what the direction he felt was.
Yes, yes. What is the direction you want us to say?
Here's the direction.
Okay.
North.
North by Northwest. It's a movie?
Again, for the, for the present, we'll ask TDC to continue to work through CHP to provide staffing at the visitor's center. We will be prepared, if all else fails, to ready ourselves to step into the breach. In this interim period, and Ms. Crushour's already made contact with the folks who run the elevator, we'll investigate further this idea if there is a contractor out there that might be willing to do that. And if we could find someone, and we think that might be a reasonable, again, we'll have to go through a competitive process, so this is a little awkward to do, if we then may go back and entertain the discussion with TDC about a change in the contractor.
Any disagreements with that direction?
I will state my disagreement, acknowledging that the majority wants to go north.
Okay, all right. Commissioner Smith?
I'll just state that, I mean, the partnership in the past has been with CHP and the visitor's center, and I kind of feel that, and I'm separating the interpretive center from that point, by the way. So I feel that, you know, once it's our responsibility, then it's our responsibility. But right now, it's still operating, and it's not really something I don't think that we need to be concerned about until it's exactly our problem. So that's why.
I want to just quickly say, CHP took on that responsibility anyway.
Right.
Yeah, they do.
Right.
Okay, let's move on to the next historical facility, and that is the Erma Tinger House. Scott, you can talk to us about volunteer management.
Yes, Mayor Norris and Commissioner, at your session last week, you requested that staff meet with Sergeant Raul Harding to discuss the status of their, of their partnership with the city as, as the volunteers that have been basically operating the Erma Tinger House for us, for, as you know, quite a number of years. And so at that direction, we, we did meet with Mr. and Mrs. Harding just this week, and, and discussed whether they would wish to continue to operate in this capacity, or some other capacity, or, or not at all, or whatever the case may be. In our meeting, just to give you a short summary of what I've kind of took from that as, as the major points, Mr. and Mrs. Harding indicated that they would be seeking some, some agreement points with the city if they were to continue to operate or to work with the city as, as volunteers at the Erma Tinger House. And again, just as a reminder, as, as I think you know, and it was discussed last week, I think the standing agreement with the Hardings was that they would operate through the end of this calendar year, and then, you know, basically, that's kind of beyond that, is sort of unknown. And again, as you know, we have, really have no other option planned at this point, anyway, for operating the house. The, the major, the major agreement points that, that Mr. and Mrs. Harding would be seeking, if they were, if they were willing to, if they were going to continue volunteering, would be, and these are in no particular order, one, that the city make a commitment to improving the operations of the Erma Tinger House in general, and that certain levels of investment in the house be made, and I think that's in reference to, to the physical investments of the house that we, again, that we discussed quite a bit last week. Two, that the scope of their volunteer management responsibilities be expanded to include things that go beyond just the Erma Tinger House, such as working with other heritage entities in the community, and there's some, I think that could kind of go in a, in a few different directions, or mean a few different things, but that's kind of the general statement on that. Thirdly, that the Hardings would like to have a position title other than just simply volunteers, to reflect a level of the responsibility and authority that that, that they would have. And then, lastly, for the major points that I've got, they would request a stipend for expenses towards their operation of the house. The number that we discussed, although not concrete, but just that was put out there, was in the neighborhood of something like $3,000 a year, and this would be for things that they've traditionally kind of picked up at their own expense, and through, through no intention of the city, but just because of their generosity and their commitment to running the house. That's, that's just what they've done, and so that would, that would, I guess, help offset some of those costs. I think what we'd be looking at is if the commission were willing to entertain these thoughts or these ideas, that staff would recommend that we, we formalize this in a written agreement. Now, in, in past, and several years back, we did have a formal volunteer management agreement with Mr. and Mrs. Harding. At some point in time, that expired, and I think we just kind of kept on working with them under a friendly, friendly agreement arrangement because they were willing to do so, and, and the city was willing to let them. And so I would recommend that, you know, it seems that the conditions would be changing somewhat, that we would definitely want to formalize this agreement. And, and I think in exchange for some of those requests, the city would probably want to clarify what some of our expectations would be, such as operating hours, or basic, you know, just general operations of the facility. I think also, obviously, you know, a consideration here is that you had a conversation earlier this evening with the National Park Service about the future of the home, and, and so how that ties in, I think is a little bit unknown, but probably certainly plays a factor, has an influence on that. So there were other things that were discussed. It was a, we had a lengthy conversation, a good conversation, and there were a lot more, I'd call them minor details that were discussed, but I think those were kind of my takeaways as the major, major points. Mr. and Mrs. Harding are here, of course, and if they had anything to add, they could certainly do that, or if the commission had any questions or clarifications, I'm sure they'd be happy to answer those, and I'd be looking for some further direction from the commission as to what you'd like us to do.
Are there comments from the commission? I will be looking. Commissioner Neely?
I think part of it can be resolved quite easily, because we probably could look at some kind of agreement that actually covers this through the fiscal year, that is, a six-month period. If that were the case, and if we were looking at half of that $3,000 request, $1,500 out of contingency fund is really nothing, as long as you can confirm these are expenses that they in fact derived out of their, I'll say kindness of their heart in terms of the voluntary action that they took, and looking for specifics in terms of operations. But I can tell you, the two or three times I have called the Erma Tinger House, I get a response on a telephone, a line that is for the Erma Tinger House that they in fact pay for, and they can answer it at their own house. So they take, they take, they take the responsibilities not only when they're at that facility, but also in their own time, when somebody is calling the Erma Tinger House, they get a response.
Who pays this? Basically, telephone?
Well, to staff's surprise, we didn't, we were not even aware that they have been paying for this phone line for a long time, apparently. And so that would probably be one of those things that the stipend would cover if they're paying, if they are paying and have been paying it, you know, things like that, and just other general things, so...
Have you had a list that convinces you that $3,000?
I know from, we didn't actually go through and list those out, but I know from my five years of working with the Hardings, they've spent way more than probably $3,000.
So I don't think, I don't think the monetary issue should be an issue. I mean, their request is extremely modest.
I agree. I agree.
I just want to clarify my statement. I'm not sure how much they spend on an annual basis. I haven't personally tracked that. I'm sure they probably have an idea, but over time, it's been at least that amount.
Yeah. Okay.
Yeah, I mean, the height of our visitor season is actually in this, you know, late spring, summer, and so fiscal year doesn't quite cover that. And I assume that they'll want to take the same kind of January off like McLaughlin House does and the other museums when they were open did as well.
The point is that if it comes to that...
We have some defined.
And we have a defined. The point is, $1,500 out of current contingency is just nothing.
I agree. I think, I mean, from my point of view, you can continue to work with them towards refining an agreement. And I think I would certainly want to, the tie-in with the National Parks is to, you know, make sure the house is accessible through staff and that our city staff, if need be by National Park Service, I don't think that's a problem. And then, you know, if there's a change of management, that would be the...
Yeah, I think we would be working with that, understanding that there's some kind of contingency, so. I would, my recommendation would be that we would go back and kind of try to refine some of these discussions, and then bring back a proposed agreement to you to make sure that you're clear on what, because again, they've asked for some, they've asked for some agreement points that are beyond what we're doing at the current time, and we need to, you know, need to be comfortable with those.
Yeah, I'm not sure I understand that, how we can play a role in the scope of volunteerism beyond the house. That's what I'm not certain about what that means.
I'm not positive, but I think I would probably defer to the Hardings to answer that question as to what that means exactly, because that's, we didn't get, we kind of had a first-level conversation. I would need to dig a little deeper, but I don't know whether you want to ask the Hardings tonight, or whether you'd rather just have staff discuss that and bring it back.
Staff discussing it unless you want to hear?
We'll bring back some more definitive action and kind of resolve these questions that you can react to.
Okay, we would like to hear from you again.
Very good. Thank you.
Oh, sorry, Commissioner Smith, you're there.
Obviously, I am very supportive of a lot of these points and also support a formal agreement at some point. I have asked the Hardings multiple times, and I actually, hopefully, they, I think we would welcome them to come up if they want to talk. But I know that the amount of money that goes into that house, out of their pocket, from anything from the phone, to furnace filters, to bark dust, to, I mean, it's unbelievable. It's really unbelievable. The plaque on the side of the house that referenced it as a national historic site was paid out of their money. And I've constantly tried to get a vision in my own head, which I think is probably the closest anyone in this room that really knows what they've put into it, except for them themselves. And I can't even come to some conclusion about how much money they've put into that house, but I would like to invite them to come up and maybe if they have wanted to share some of their comments. But the amount of work that they've done in that house for the last 15 years is unbelievable. And so it's very clear to me why, when they talk about the house, that they're so passionate about it and emotional about it, and sometimes even frustrated and angry about it. And I would say that, I've said this to the Historic Review Board and to you as well, but that's why I am that way, too. You know, when you put 15 years of your life into that house, which they have, and I feel that I have in some degree, it's really our house. It's really the Harding's house more than it is the city's, and that's why they care so much about it. And I appreciate the fact that we're talking about this, and it's been a really emotional thing for them and me. And quite frankly, and I hope I'm not out of line by saying this, but Marge asked me several months ago, what did I do wrong? And I said, "Well, you didn't leave." And because I really, truly believe that it wouldn't be until they left that city would really see what they had to deal with and what was really the responsibility that the Hardings have been dealing with. And truly, the only mistake that the Hardings ever meant, made was that they didn't leave the house. And I think that because of that commitment to the house, the city has really not understood fully the responsibility that they've put on themselves for that house. And so I'm glad that at least now we have, that at least staff has some idea maybe of what that was. So I would invite them to come up if they'd like to for a little bit, just to share what they, if they want to, I don't know. But I think it's, I'm really happy to be talking about this topic tonight, and with the possibilities of future National Parks, this has been a long time coming, so...
We all recognize that the house wouldn't be open without the Hardings, so, why don't you, you guys want to talk?
Coming up here, I've got anything to ask.
Sure, Commissioner Neely, go ahead.
They come up while I'm speaking.
Sure.
We have the, many of the Oregon Interpreter Center closed, city facility, Kearney closed the city facility. The Erma Tinger is a city facility. I would hope that we can address this, because no commitment to a timeline bringing this forward has been made. I don't want this to go very far into the next year, because we will have no contract as of January 1. And so I regard there's a degree of real urgency in getting something to us.
At least by the start of February, when the house probably reopen. Okay, welcome.
Marjorie R. Harding.
We know. How well we know.
And what city do you reside in?
Oh, no. No, you don't have to.
Just outside the borders.
Incidentally, we do open the house in January if we get phone calls. So anytime we get phone calls for a tour, we do them. So yes, January.
We do it as needed. Okay.
Commissioner Smith, no, we wish not to purchase the house. Yes, we do have that connection and that feeling towards it, but, which we've had to resist as much as possible. But our love affair with the house is on a longstanding basis. And a couple of clarifications that Mayor you asked. We have done more than just the manager of the house. We get calls, many calls a week about, "We're coming to Oregon City, what can we do? What can we see?" And Marge has spent many hours working with John and working with some of the other sites and organizing activities for people to come, and these are people that are out of the area. So it's an ongoing thing. We've attended meetings, state meetings on tourism, and we always promote and we always tuck up Oregon City and the importance of the historic value here in Oregon City, and encourage people to come. So it's gone beyond that, and that's why that area was mentioned by Mr. Archer. And I want to thank Mr. Archer for giving a real accurate account of our meeting. They were very patient with us, he and Denise. We kept them much longer than they anticipated, but that was part of the passion and part of the information we needed to get rid of, off our shoulders, and they were very patient in doing that. So I don't know if that clarifies it, Mayor Norris, or not, in terms of the expansion, perhaps. And we also find that the title of volunteer manager in a statewide meeting is, doesn't carry the weight that just a title would be, and that's part of that discussion with Mr. Archer. So we will continue that, so.
Good, thank you very much.
I got a question.
Will I want you to let Marge speak?
She'll probably answer my question.
One of the things that the state has established as its motto is one that I've taken internally and feel that this is something that we need to really focus on in Oregon City. And that motto is to remember, restore, and reconnect. And that's basically what I feel that we need to do. I feel that much of the heart and soul of Oregon City is out there, it's gone. And we need to reconnect with that feeling, the feeling of onemanship and ownership. And so that's basically, the idea is to expand what we've already been doing. We've been doing this for about 12 years, and just to basically put a title on what we have already been doing, and that is representing the city of Oregon City with a passion, with a hope, with fervor, and tell the story of Oregon City. Erma Tinger House is part of that story, is an essential part of that story. But the story of Oregon City is not being told, and I think that's really the direction that I would like to see us go. And so that's kind of part of the passion.
And I also appreciate the letter to Tracy Fort.
Yes, very much.
Poor Tracy, we've, every time I see her...
We've been having a lot of...
Yeah, for many, as my capacity as MMA president, I've had meetings with her in that regard, and she knows what's coming, because I always hit on the idea that, please, this is a way of saving that poor home. So thank you for doing that.
Commissioner Neely?
Yes, while you're there, Mr. Archer and the mayor made reference to it, the, I'm not going to get the words right, but responsibilities being beyond that of the Erma Tinger House, and I would like you to kind of expand about what you were thinking about.
That's what I just was, that's what I was referring to.
State regional meetings and others.
And we go to these national meetings, these state meetings, anyway.
Your representatives of still the Urban...
Of the Erma Tinger House, and we kind of say Oregon City. It would be nice to be official.
Sure, I understand.
That's basically what that is.
Okay, well, thank you very much.
Thank you.
We look forward to continuing conversation.
Thank you.
Okay, back to the agenda. Next is the consent agenda. May I have a motion for adoption of all the items on the consent agenda except for items E and F?
Some moved.
Second?
Second.
Moved by Commissioner Smith, seconded by Commissioner Nocita on the consent agenda. The vote, please.
Commissioner Nocita. Commissioner Neely?
Aye.
Commissioner Smith?
Aye.
Mayor Norris?
Aye. Motion passes four zero. Now let's take item E, that is the reappointment of members to the Urban Renewal Commission. Commissioner Nocita, you had questions about that?
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. I guess I'm going to direct my comments to the city attorney on this, because in reading over the resolution establishing the Urban Renewal Commission, it seems to me that the bylaws here, or the resolution, is silent on reappointments. And I'm confused as to whether we have the authority to reappoint. If we do, do we have to entertain, for the top paragraph on page two, do we have to entertain three candidates? Again, in the second, section two down there, sees the initial citizen membership, one member will serve one-year term, two members will serve two-year terms, and two members will serve a full three-year term. But there isn't any language in any of these paragraphs on whether those initial members can be reappointed or not.
I hadn't looked at that, but you're right, I don't see anything in there that talks about reappointment. It really, yeah, there's nothing in there that really says you can't reappoint them. It's, you know, what, how does the commission interpret this resolution in terms of whether reappointments are required, or whether reappointments are possible, or whether you have to go through the whole nominating thing for new people when there's a vacancy? Maybe some, I was wondering if there might be some guidance in the code. I don't think there is any on the general, so, you know, I think at the initial stage, my thought would be that it's really at the commission's discretion, do they interpret this as members can continue to be reappointed to additional terms, or do they want to go through the entire selection membership when there is a, every time a term expires?
If it's up to our interpretation, I guess I would just turn to get the opinion of my colleagues here.
I have a question.
Commissioner Neely?
And this has some bearing in terms of what's been said, but it may not be clear. A decision made by the Urban Renewal Commission, agency commission, is it appealable to the city commission?
Unless there's some statute or code provision that makes it appealable, it's a separate party.
If that's not the case, I do not, I do not know why the Urban Renewal Commission itself would make the appointments. I mean, we did initially, because we were the Urban Renewal Commission.
The city commission makes them.
Is that in the charter?
That's in the bylaws.
It is in the bylaws. City commission makes the appointments.
Yes.
Okay. Okay. Well, that clarifies that. I assume these were not advertised as openings, or were they?
Nancy Ives, the next speaker.
They were advertised, we treat reappointments and reappointments the same. We advertised for two openings on the Urban Renewal Commission, and I received two applications, and that was the applications for the two that are up for reappointment.
I don't, I don't think there's an issue for us.
May I ask where they were advertised?
Many places, through the media, through the website, through neighborhood associations, through mass email list, I think, that I have, as well as all the other appointments are sent out the same way.
Okay.
In which case, I have no problem.
Yeah, I think, I think that satisfies my concern about the language, because if there were, if new members were sought out and then there was just no applicants, that kind of solves the issue by default. Okay.
Do you want to have a motion then?
If I may.
You got more?
Yeah, I just have one comment. I did, I do want to reemphasize something regarding the citizen members of the Urban Renewal Commission. I've had some concern expressed to me regarding Mr. Shaw and the extent to which he has consulted and attended McLaughlin Neighborhood Association meetings. I haven't had any concerns expressed to me about Mr. Peterson. In fact, when I attended the Chambers GIAC Committee regarding the economic...
Government Affairs.
Government Economic Affairs Committee. Regarding the Economic Development Coordinator position, Mr. Peterson was in attendance and did give an update on Urban Renewal, his activities there. So I just want to emphasize, as we make these reappointments, that my understanding of the purpose of citizen members was to represent... that my understanding of the purpose of citizen members was to represent, um, a certain constituency and section of the public of Oregon City. And that in so doing it is very important that those who are, um, placed in this position of trust do in fact assiduously, uh, seek out the opinions of, uh, those, um, people, those, um, organizations, uh, whom they're, which they're representing, um, and, and get their opinions, um, regarding matters before the Urban Renewal Commission. And, uh, with that concern expressed, I will move to reappoint Mr. Peterson and Mr. Shaw to the Urban Renewal Commission.
For the terms?
For the terms, January 1st, 2010 to December 31st, 2012.
Second?
Second.
Moved by Commissioner Nocita, seconded by Commissioner Neely. Um, discussion? All right. Uh, Nancy, the vote, please.
Commissioner Nocita?
Aye.
Commissioner Neely?
Aye.
Commissioner Smith?
Aye.
Mayor Norris?
Motion passes four zero. Next, we have consideration of the minutes of December 2nd. Um, uh, Commissioner Neely, was that your concern?
Well, I think we both had concern.
Okay.
The two of you? Okay.
Either one.
Whoever hits the button first, I'll try on.
Who do you think that's going to be?
I think it might be. I don't see it yet.
I yield to...
Oh, no, I hit the wrong one.
I, I yield, I yield to Commissioner, uh, I yield to Commissioner, uh, Smith.
Seeing no green, but I will, I will accept the yield. Commissioner Smith?
Um, it's just a clarification. On page five, um, fourth paragraph down, it's under talk with the discussion of, um, executive session minutes. Uh, it says Karen Maury asked, "Who was privy to executive session minutes?" Uh, Mr. Kabizman said, "Whit minutes could be assessed, accessed by current city commission." I know that it was pretty clear that past commissions couldn't, but future commissions, I believe, could.
Currently active commissioners who...
So, when we're gone and new commissioners come in, don't they have the ability to look back too?
Yes.
So, I don't know if that's...
Seated commissioners.
Yeah.
It was confusing to me because it, to, to me, it read current, meaning this is a current group, but I don't...
Access by, what's the best way to put this? Um, seated commissioners, um, would that...
Sworn?
Yeah, the, by people who are serving as city commissioners at the time of the request.
Yeah, something like that. Because, right, that, that's the only question I had.
So, that's clarified. Oh, uh, so you have an addition you're going to add to that one?
Yeah.
Sorry.
He already stated.
Okay.
Yeah.
So, the question is going to be accessed only by the...
Access by currently serving...
Currently serving.
City commissioners at the time of the request.
Okay, at the time of the request. Is there another one?
No.
Are there others?
Page one.
Okay.
Um, the, uh, at, at the end of page one, not quite at the end because that, that's you, um, Mayor Norris, but just before the end, they're referring to Commissioner Neely. Yes, sir.
Eight F.
Is this licensed?
No. Page one of the minutes.
I'm looking at it.
Of eight F? I'll, I'll go ahead and start talking.
Sure, go ahead. Is there another page one? No?
Commissioner Neely said in 2004 that, uh, he had no objection to the zone, uh, to zoning this area institutional. This is a reference to where the public works, his offices are current. Uh, while that's true, that's not what I said. And I will give my own wording. Commissioner Neely said he recalled no objections to zoning this area institutional during the public comment period for the comprehensive plan adopted in 2004. There is nobody objected.
Why did you, why don't, what if you just used the word heard?
No, I, I like it the way I wrote it. Commissioner Neely said he recalled no objections to zoning this area institutional during the public comment period for the comprehensive plan adopted in 2004. I was very specific about it.
Yes, I hear that.
Got it?
If that's what, uh, what was said at the meeting.
You, you can check, but what I did not say is I didn't object. I was talking about nobody objecting.
I agree. That was certainly what I heard once, and tonight also. Okay, are there other corrections?
You want to make a motion?
I move, I move the minutes be adopted with the, uh, with the additions stated.
Second, moved by Commissioner Neely, seconded by Commissioner Smith. On the minutes of December the 2nd, the vote, please.
Commissioner, um, um, sorry, we do have a speaker.
Do we have a comment?
Mister, um, I just couldn't get him up there quick enough. Mister Gifford.
On the minutes, okay. Gee, we rarely have anyone that speaks on the minutes.
And we have to be...
Of course. New first.
Madam Mayor and, uh, city commissioners, I'm William Gifford. I live in, uh, McLaughlin Neighborhood Association of Oregon City. Um, I did have some, thanks for the opportunity to, to take another peek at these things. On page two of the minutes, in the middle of the page, it says, "Mr. Conkle said the historic review board agreed to the height adjustment. It did not want offices on the top floor." Page three of eight.
See the...
Or page two. We have a couple of different page numbers to choose from there.
Yes.
Um, and I don't think that's absolutely correct. And as a matter of fact, I think that, uh, Vicky Yates spoke to Mr. Conkle about that, uh, decision from the historic review board, and I would like that clarified.
Thank you.
Um, I, I have four. Second one is, uh, Mr. Conkle said, uh, uh, two paragraphs down from there. It said, "Mr. Conkle said blah, blah, blah. Uh, the majority of the vehicles were not large trucks." As a matter of fact, point in fact, um, Mr. Conkle said only 10 trucks would be greater than one ton in size. I, I really have an issue with the use of the word only 10 trucks because I think that is disingenuously biasing, uh, the commission in their decision. And I think that it, the record should say that he said only 10 trucks instead of saying more than nine trucks were going to be over one ton. The wording, I think, is misleading. He said only 10 trucks would be over one ton. And I object to the word only, but I think it ought to be in the record that that's exactly what he said. He didn't say the majority of vehicles were not large trucks.
We'll check the tapes and we'll...
Thank you very much.
...report it as it was.
And, uh, down at the bottom, Commissioner West said, uh, "This is the most conservative way to use taxpayer money because it required no bond." That's, um, none of the alternatives would have required bonds, as far, as I understand.
That's what she said.
The point is, did she say that?
Did she say it?
Yes, I'm sorry. You're right. That's right.
Even our own erroneous actual information can make it into the minutes.
And the last, uh, in the last paragraph, Mr. Conkle said, uh, "Had done geotechnical work on the site to address the historic lock wall." Same page, last paragraph. Specifically, he said that, that, that there were no incidents of rock falls on the site. That's what he said. It's incorrect, but that's what he said.
Okay, thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Are there any others on this particular set of minutes? Yeah, we have a motion then for...
I'll move subject to a review of the tapes.
All right. Move back, Commissioner Neely, seconded by Commissioner Nocita. Um, the vote, please. Nancy?
Commissioner Nocita?
Aye.
Commissioner Neely?
Aye.
Commissioner Smith?
Aye.
Mayor Norris?
Aye. Motion passes four zero. And that concludes the business agenda. We'll move into reports, and the first is our city manager, Mr. Patterson.
So, Madam Mayor, members of the commission, let me see if this is coming up right now. My screen doesn't seem to want to stay on the page I put it on.
I am having that too. It keeps clicking back to the top.
Change in agenda item, it start, kicks back to the beginning.
I actually only have, uh, two items for you this evening. Uh, is, uh, the update on the ComCans fresh franchise. I, I do not have that. Hopefully, we'll have that shortly after the first of the year. At the last commission meeting, you had inquired in regards to, uh, the possibility of a warming shelter, and we said we'd look at the resources. And this evening, you have a memo, uh, there that, uh, Mr. Archer and his staff took a look at, and that's kind of the resources in the area. So, if you have any questions on that or any other comment, we'll be glad to attempt to, uh, answer those. So... And then, uh, finally, I want to just, uh, remind everyone that we do have, uh, the dedication of city hall, uh, on Friday, uh, at 4:00 PM. Uh, begins for us between 4:00 and 6:00. And we did put together a little information I think you might find of interest. Uh, Ms. Bankhead has done some research here in regards to recent constructions, uh, two seven, 2007 to present of city halls in Oregon. And you have a listing of those. I, I think kind of the, uh, important piece there is that cost per square foot. And though there's some variation because everybody has done things a little different, I think you will see that, uh, we did a, a pretty good job with, uh, bringing this in at a very reasonable cost. We're at a $172 a square foot, and you'll see these ranging in here. Uh, I think, uh, with this grouping here, we are the, uh, the low, and they range all the way up to $500 a square foot that was in McMinnville. So, uh, I think you got a pretty good bang for the buck here.
Another interesting, uh, piece would have been population of those communities too.
Yep.
McMinnville's comparable, I know.
Yeah, we actually, uh, looked across the country as well, and there's some, again, it's hard to compare construction across, across country, but, uh, there are some really big dollars being spent out there for things. Now, there, again, you'll see with the notes, it's, it's not truly all together, an apples-to-apples type thing, but we have a lot that is placed in our, beyond just the construction cost because you have the furnishings, uh, you have all the AV stuff and things of that nature as well. So, again, you know, that's a very reasonable cost for this facility.
When I compare, uh, talk with other mayors about our new facility, because it's of, of interest, many communities are considering it. They're, they're really quite amazed at, uh, the costs that we were able to achieve to, to moving. So, thank you for that.
That concludes my report.
All right. Thank you then. Um, back to commission, actually, first meeting, I guess.
Let me indicate to you, that, that cost includes the purchase of the property as well.
Purpose of the property, yeah.
May I, may I inquire? We have, we have items here that he didn't address, I think.
He said that he was doing that.
He's going to move the A.
Yeah, later.
Okay.
Didn't have it all together. Okay, um, tonight, I have, uh, four members of the planning commission to reappoint. And, um, just with a note, I don't think I've been able to talk with all of you, uh, that normally, uh, send emails about the planning commission. Um, we, because of appointments and unexpired terms that people filled, we've lost the stagger. So, essentially, this year, we would be appointing five new planning commissioners. So, to avoid that, two of the commissioners have not served of the full eight years that they are allowed to do. So, to recreate the stagger, so that you're not appointing new people and retain some of the experience, I'm appointing Tim Powell and Dan Lejoie to one more year, and then they'll be term limited out. So, um, they will serve to the end of, um, of next year. And then, Carter Stein and Chris Groner will, um, take the full four-year term. Uh, and then we'll have one brand-new appointment. Um, I don't know if we've gotten any applications for that position yet, so it's still open until we do. Yes, Commissioner Nocita.
Question about the reappointments, the planning commission.
Yes.
Um, in the code, the planning commission is supposed to be seven members. And I'm just wondering why we have consistently only had five members?
Because we do not have the, um, we, we've, during my term, I think I appointed seven once and immediately two resigned. It's been, I think, for several mayors back, it's been very difficult to keep seven. It's a very, very heavy workload, and, um, we just haven't had seven viable applicants. So, I, I'm happy to do it if we could find them.
Well, I'd, I'd like to make a suggestion. I, I would, I think we should probably consider changing the code. And here's why. Um, no, the code, as far as the number that required. And the reason I say this is, um, I have a vague recollection that back where in Michigan where I'm from, there were cases that said if you did not have the appropriate number of members on a board, um, sitting at the time a decision was made, that that decision was avoidable. I don't know what the case law is in Oregon, but I'd rather just not be at risk of that.
And there are some cases, it really depends on the language of the ordinances and the languages of the statutes involved. I, I don't, you know, the, the general Oregon statute is, doesn't lend itself to that interpretation, and neither does ours. Um, but if the reality is that you consistently can find five, does it, you know, make sense to, to reflect reality? It, it, it may well.
Commissioner, we did talk about that during the time when I was looking for seven. And, um, and in the studies that we did in other, other jurisdictions, um, usually the number of the city council was the same number as the, as a planning commission, and ours was a bit of an aberration, we found at the time. So, I'm, I'm supportive of that.
Would you, should we give direction then to the city attorney to prepare certain ordinance amendments to that effect?
Me.
It, it would be some changes to, uh, some, it would probably something to have to go to DLCD with 45-day notice, so it's going to be a little while before you see it.
Not an urgent matter at all.
Yeah.
Thank you, though. I think that's a good move.
I think we've had this argument before, so we're still on the same page now.
Yes, yes, I know. Yeah. Okay. Uh, so, those appointments are made. So, let's move into, um, reports from commissioners. Commissioner Smith?
Um, just a couple, um, comments tonight. First, I want to wish my dad a happy birthday today. And, um, I was walking through, I left my house today, and look what I found. And I'm worried about this one, but I counted them up, and I'm, I think I'm pretty happy. But I did 90 out of the 150 things. So, I feel pretty good about that, but...
Commissioner Smith?
Yeah, I was going to... There was a temporary tattoo that I got at National Night Out from the police department.
As, as did I.
So, I think that counts.
As did I. And, um, if, if Commissioner Smith, if you had actually put that on, put that on the agenda and offered up the prize that you offered, because I have 94, that I was going to reveal my tattoo.
Let's see it.
No, 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 you didn't, uh, give me advance warning, so...
I'll, I'll buy you a cup of coffee or something.
Lame.
See a person?
How many, how many did you...
I believe you, I believe you offered a $20...
Do I want to see it?
I think you offered a $20 dinner certificate, didn't you?
Yeah.
I, I remember distinctly. We'll have to check the tape, but...
Does that include me in the dinner?
You, you, you mean?
No, I don't like to gamble with him. Sorry. Okay, so, um, also, um, spent two Saturdays at the Irma Tinger House. Um, the museum, the open house, um, on December 5th, wow, um, was so great. Um, about 140, 45, I think, people through the Irma Tinger House on, on the 5th of December, which was great. Um, and then for the parkour tours on December 12th, which was the day that we had the, um, nonexistent ice storm, um, 60 people showed up to go through the house, even though everyone was told to stay in their house. Um, so, I, I thought those were really successful and, um, just enjoyed, um, spending the, the day with the Hardings and, and some other volunteers there and, and just talking to people coming into the house, one of which was someone that I think we talked to years and years ago who had lived at the Irma Tinger House, uh, when it was on Center Street, uh, which is always fun. Um, and then the last thing I wanted to mention is tomorrow night, um, at Oregon City High School, Pioneer Pageant, which is, um, a fundraising event. Um, it is, um, throughout the whole month of December, really, the students at Oregon City High School and teachers, um, raise money to, um, for Bear Necessities, which is to give, um, money to families in our Oregon City School District who desperately need help over the holidays. And, um, I'm happy to say that with all the contest between teachers, that I'm one of the teachers that will not have a, um, ice cream sundae built on his head on Friday because I raised several hundred dollars. Um, but on tomorrow night, um, is kind of the conclusion, or conclusion of that, which is Pioneer Pageant. It's really a pageant with, um, to find out who Mr. and Miss Oregon City is. And so, the students compete in different competitions and, um, talent things and, and stuff like that. And so, I believe it's like three or four dollars to get in, and that money goes to Bear Necessities. And it's at 7:00, and, um, it will be judged by myself and, uh, the police chief and a few other, um, people from around the community. it's at 7:00 o'clock, and it will be judged by myself and the police chief and a few other people from around the community, I think, so it's still on your calendar, right? I think he's checking it right now.
No, it's still...
So anyway, if you have nothing to do tomorrow night, come hang out at the high school, it should be fun.
Thank you. Other commissioners have reports this evening?
You look at your list.
I am. I see no one.
You're on citizen comment, I think.
Oh gee, really? Why ain't he a citizen?
He has a citizen.
Sorry about that.
I'm scrolling down.
Commissioner Nacita's on now, I guess.
I don't see him.
No item, okay, sorry about that.
Right there, good job.
Well, I'll call on you anyway, Commissioner Nacita and Commissioner Neely.
First, I have some questions of staff on updates to the city manager, the status of the light on the Hops lot, we talked about it at our session before. I had gotten a request that I passed on that folks in the law library who park there at the parking lot at Main and 10th are concerned about safety at the dark.
Yeah, I haven't gotten a report back on that yet, but I haven't gotten a report back on it yet, so...
From whom?
Just crush our, so we'll get it.
Okay. And then, curious, Mr. Luffler, just the status of our city manager search, just how many folks have applied, no names needed, just like, you know, number, broad geographic range, narrow geographic range, I'm just curious.
So far, we've had nine applicants. Michigan is the, I think, the farthest east that we have so far. So nine applicants, I won't comment on quality, I'll leave that for the selection committee, but so far, so well. Our recruitments for the primary websites that we use, and they're getting, and we're getting hits from the League of California Cities website and also the ICMA website. Those expire December 31st, but we are, we are going to probably renew those for another, unfortunately, we have to go for 30 days, even though the recruitment only goes to the 12th. But, you know, depending again on what the selection committee does, you know, if we extend it for another 30 days, and we can always continue the recruitment, keep it open longer if we, if we feel the need to, rather than closing on the 12th.
Managers from in-state calling me, I've had five calls to date on the position. I have a number of questions about the position in the city, so...
Thirdly, I'd just like to review, renew my request to certain of my fellow commissioners for, you know, a report in the not-too-distant future about what's going on at South Fork Water Board.
It wasn't at the last meeting, the earlier one was there.
And I think I'll close, because I'm pretty sure this is our last meeting this year.
You can be very certain.
Yes. I'd like to address the citizenry of Oregon City and just wish everybody a happy Christmas and New Year, and if folks are considering what their New Year's resolution's going to be this year, I would like to make an entreaty and a request that people in town consider public service when the New Year dawns. Next year's going to be a very interesting and transitional year with a turnover in our city manager's position, a mayor who is term limited out and will be retiring, and two city commissioners who will be up for reelection. And we have many, many boards and commissions in town, I guess I'm a little concerned, learning tonight, that we got so few applicants for various positions that were posted.
Top duty.
And in addition, the amount of subject matter that we're going to be addressing next year will be substantial. I could name the possibility of a new library, I can name the possibility of new police station, continuing saga of our urban renewal efforts and north-end redevelopment plans, the ever dicey economic situation of our main employer down on the riverfront, and I'm feeling a bit of trepidation about all this we're going to confront in an economic recession to boot. And I think really that Oregon City can't afford to have its best minds and its best spirits stepping forward to engage in public service. So that's my entreaty for folks, and I would like to thank my colleagues and all our staff for their very dedicated work this year, and I look forward to the New Year.
Thank you. Actually, and to add to that, you know, Oregon, the recession has actually, we have done very well during the recession, we've maintained jobs, we've created them, we had our financial black hole prior to it, and it's, I just thank staff tremendously for hanging in there, for writing those grant proposals, work, and, you know, Nancy Crashar, who's always in touch with the State Department for money for roads, the Parks Department's gathered some great grants, we're the recipient of two stimulus monies, we're in the state transportation bill at 22 million, we're really doing a great job. So I look forward to next year, which will be the year of the facility, we have, there are about three more to add to that, that we have to deal with in the community, and I think we're fortunate that we're able to move forward during times like these, so I want to thank the citizens for their support this year, it's been strong, and from what I've heard, the community is very, very supportive of the look of Oregon City, the feel of Oregon City, the new City Hall, the way it looks, so it's nice to be in a community that is continuing forward progress. I think the one black cloud for me is, I just can't even conceive of the bridge closure while we rehabilitate one of the most beautiful bridges in the area, but when it's done, it'll be great.
In America.
Maybe in America, okay. Next is Commissioner Neely.
Coming back to the fact that we've been able to retain our employees and then actually hire additional ones, we need to thank the electorate.
Yep, no layoffs.
Yeah, no layoffs, and that was because they, they went ahead and they passed the annexation to the Clarkmuss Fire District with the realization that we would, we would in fact have an increase in the total commitment of the city to those, to services, so that we could maintain those services. I feel we made it very clear that that was the case, and they supported us in that effort by a very large percentage of the vote, and I wish to thank them. I've got a couple more things. I regard 150 things to do, things is a, is a word that means anything, and I would claim that I noted there were 150 trees planted, and those are my things, so I have a greater number...
You plant them, though.
Each one of them.
Did you plant each one yourself?
Well, I didn't, I didn't, I didn't plant those, but I will make, I will state that in the Oregon City area in that particular year, I probably planted about 70 or 80.
Not 150.
Yeah.
And he's at 94, so, yeah.
Maybe next year.
Yeah, good luck.
But we won't have a subsequent, never mind.
Cesqure Centennial.
Cesqure Centennial.
Cesqure.
Cesqure Centennial.
Centennial, very good.
The other thing, I went in, I'm going to correct myself in a nod of a head, I don't think I made any statement, but when the, when the courage of the citizens was acknowledged here by the police department, I believe that it was, they stated that it might be the first, and I think I probably shook my head, no, and I don't know that. I did want to say that in my time of the commission, and when the city had its own fire department, the fire department recognized two citizens for their courage on those kinds of incidents, so the recognition has been given by the city before, but I don't know about the, about the police department.
Is that the end of your report?
Yes.
Commissioner, Mr. Patterson.
Just want to give you an update on the bridge, is that closure, looks like it's being pushed back into the year sometime, so Ms. Crashar, do you know when they're now?
I think right now it's the end of the year.
Towards the end of the year, even before we see that.
Do we know what the source of the delay is?
Um, I don't know if it's... Figured out, we knew well before they...
Thank you for the update. Okay, and then the last thing, well, two things, you know, I serve on the Light Rail Committee, and we made some huge decisions at our meeting two weeks ago, and one is the height of the bridge that will be the span for light rail and pedestrians to cross the bridge, it'll be 77 feet high, and it was a huge debate, who knew that the height of a bridge span, and they measured from the water, could be so interesting. And a huge factor is global warming and climate change, in that the model measured how much rainfall is expected in the future, and it's five inches a year, so they took that new, new rainfall, and took that, and because the wall amit's fed by the runoff, they figured that into the model, how much the wall amit will raise, and then determined the cost per foot of where it was, and hid it in the middle. So anyway, it's going to be 77.25 feet, it's, the federal money has begun to flow, there's a lot of local matches that are needed, including from Clarkmuss County, it's not quite firmed, but light rail needs, the in-water construction, particularly of the bridge, is one of the big pieces of the light rail system, is projected, the cost will go up by 61 million if it can't begin by the fall of 2011, so there are a very tight timeline, that's tight for federal money. So Commissioner Nacita asked for, you know, why we weren't giving reports from South Fork Water Board. Well, one, one thing that I don't know that we, that you receive minutes from our meetings, do you? So I've, I've, well, ask our manager, John Collins, to give you the minutes, and that will help you update the things that happened. But the most exciting thing, I think at the last meeting, was the report, which was in the Oregonian. That is a local paper, isn't it? It was in the Oregonian, and we are very proud to announce that, after two rounds of mandatory sampling of 60 samples, not one of those water samples, they're looking for lead and copper, exceeded the mandatory levels, and that's pretty amazing, which means that this is the lowest levels that have been, since 1992. So Oregon City and Westland are very clean, and the amounts of lead and copper are measured in the older households, and so the households that were detected originally that triggered this mandatory resampling, where they're called Tier One homes built between 1980 and 1985. So the, so now, we, South Fork Water Board, which is the water board for Westland and Oregon City, has qualified for a reduced monitoring program, so that means we're, we're in the clear, and the water's always been terrific, but we, and, but that is the latest good news about that. Nancy, did I make a mistake on water? Okay, okay, good. And this is our water supplier, and then we do the internal delivery here in Oregon City. So that's the report on that. We'll be working on the new master plan, and of course, producing water. Any other items to come before us this evening? Commissioner Nacita?
I wanted to correct what I think I've identified as an oversight in my commissioner communication, in thanking staff and exhorting citizens to participate on committees next year. I think I, my oversight was that I did not thank the citizens who currently serve on committees in very dedicated fashion, some of, some of whom even, you know, serve on multiple committees, so I would like to extend my thank you tonight to all of the citizens in town who have, over the past year, done very dedicated work as citizen volunteers on our existing committees, so thank you.
We are adjourned.